Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, March 13th. Call to order at 6:37 PM. First item of review tonight will be Animal Control Position Description Draft.
I have no concern. I see that in red. I assume it might have been a response to my question last week.
Yep.
So that's answers my question.
Thank you.
Did we ask for clarification on the FID as well?
Yeah, that's what I was just looking up.
And I may have failed to send it to you. The chief did respond to that.
Okay.
So it is for the purposes, not that he can't speak to himself. It is the purpose of carrying a firearm. But there's no taser or other equipment that is being issued related to the FID.
Chief, would you come up?
Never mind.
I'm not sure. That made it clear for me.
Right.
So sorry I missed last week.
Thank you, chief. Oh, you're fine.
So yeah.
I guess.
Past has been a 22 caliber rifle.
Okay, I think you answered it.
Yeah.
I'm just going to restate the question.
Yeah.
What is the requirement for an FID? What is the purpose of that?
So that they could be, the person could be in possession of the 22 rifle to put down injured or sick animals without having to call an officer to come to the scene and do it. We have one that's set aside strictly for the ACO position and cruiser, so. We do not want to encourage carrying on duty and stuff like that, but it would be for the 22.
I assume that would not be, it would only be issued, would only be allowed firearm while on duty.
Right.
Right. Just for clarity, you said we wouldn't encourage carrying, but you're talking carrying the 22.
No.
There's no carrying of personal weapons or anything else?
Correct.
Even though they have an FID, Class A, whatever they have?
Correct.
A position civilian unarmed?
Correct.
Other than the 22 as needed?
Correct.
Okay.
So that actually brings to mind another question. Is that a weapon that when the ACO comes on duty, he picks it up and brings it into his vehicle or stays with the vehicle? Is it locked down?
It would be with the person themselves. It would be a possession that would stay in the cruiser or at the person's house. We do have a locked box for it if it is in the cruiser or when it's being transported in the cruiser. Outside of that, they would fall under the same guidelines of storing it inside secured locked container, locking mechanism on the trigger, ammo kept separate. They also, the reason why they would have that would be, is the way we've had it in the past is that the animal control officer would respond from their house. So let's say the call's at the center of town and they live in the center of town. To come down to the PD to grab the cruiser, to grab the 22 then to go back down, it just makes sense to have it with them in the vehicle. But they would fall under the same guidelines. Again, you can't conceal it. It's not a concealed weapon. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't apply that would already have the carry concealed, but they're not going to be allowed to do that on duty.
Right.
Outside of work, what they do is, would be under their legal rights.
Right.
And it's no taser. I think, I think you already mentioned that. No taser, no police powers. It's a civilian position.
No.
Arrest powers.
No mace as well?
I'm sorry?
Mace, mace?
They could, they never have in the past. Anybody 18 and older now can have mace without a permit. You don't have to have a permit anymore to carry a mace like we used to have to. You used to have a Class B or something like that. I forget what class it was, but anybody 18 and older. It's not a bad idea. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, to deter animals or something like that. It's not a bad thing to have. That could be something that we could look at. I mean.
Right. But currently, the animal control officer doesn't have control of mace? Or it's not issued to him?
Not issued to him through the department.
Okay.
And it should only be, I think it kind of falls with all the other things, issued or not, not on duty.
Right. So I don't have any concerns with the description, the way it's written. I do have one question, and you may not know the answer because it's asking to recall a different policy. Do we in town have a policy through the police department that if you are operating a marked vehicle, you have to be armed? Some departments have that, and I cannot recall. I don't have all of the police department policies.
So no. We do, so.
I just want to make sure.
When operating a police, a police vehicle, I, you don't have to be, I don't, the policy does not say you have to be armed.
Okay.
I will say though, that to your, to your question though, Scott, we did take off the police markings on the ACO vehicle. We took off the police patch.
Oh, okay.
We put a Irving seal on it and it just says ACO. Animal Control Officer.
So that goes around.
And police is taken off. It still does have blue and white police plates, though.
Yeah.
And all the blue lights were removed except for two side reflector ones in the back windows.
I just want to make sure we weren't approving something that would contradict something that already standing if we have it. But if we don't, that's fine. Okay.
I will double check, but I just recently read the vehicle policy and it did not.
Okay.
I don't recall.
Yeah, and if it was in there, I would say we just put a little caveat that it doesn't apply to the ACO or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
That's fine.
So one last question. You said the vehicle itself has blue lights?
No. It, so we replaced all the blue lights with just orange and white lights except for there was two side markers that we, I think to, I think when Ryan looked into removing them, it was too much work to try to remove them or something. There was some issue with the side ones, so we did leave their two little small side ones in the back. Outside of that, forward facing, rear facing are all blue, yellow and white.
Okay.
Or amber and white, whatever color it is. There the orange and white.
All right. If there becomes any concern, I assume we could disable them easier and more cost effectively than remove them, the blues.
I forget why we didn't, but.
I was just saying you could probably take the LED.
Yeah, there was something with them.
Okay.
I don't remember what it was, but yeah.
We can come back to it if it becomes a problem.
Yeah.
Good?
Yep, good.
Good.
Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Do we have to come back for another one or do you want to?
I don't think we have a minimum, so it's up to you guys.
No, I'm, I'm set with the policy.
Make a motion that we approve the animal control officer's job description as amended effective March 13th, 2023.
Second.
Just a clarification, as amended or as written? Because the amendment is embedded, right? In the written copy?
Oh, yeah.
Are you referring to the red line as amended?
Yeah, as written.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Just want to make sure I missed an amendment. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Review of Engineering Scope of Work Amendment for Bridge Street and Maple Avenue.
So although short, I think that response from Bill Storyd clarifies what our open question was?
Yes.
I have no concern.
And if I recall the discussion, we can move forward with all the engineering. It's not a which projects go with what. It's just getting the engineering done.
Correct.
Right?
If you were looking to select, just pulling it back up in front of me. At minimum, we need scopes in item one and two approved so we can finish the bid package. If we were looking to incorporate Maple Avenue, which had been the initial goal, we would need to also incorporate scope three.
Brian, could you say that again? We're, we're doing scope one, two, and three and.
So of the five scopes presented?
Right.
If we were just trying to finish Bridge Street retaining wall and reconstruction and the re-milling and resurfacing of POTW number three, we need to approve items one and two. The second goal was to be able to do the mill and overlay on Maple. So if that was the board's intention as well, we would need to approve at least number three. The other two items, they're not large dollar amounts, but they likely would not be able to be completed with the existing appropriations. So whether you did them when you mobilized now or you did them at a later date is discretionary for the three of you.
Prior to getting heavy into the budget discussion, I was going to say do scopes one through five.
I was thinking the same because it's already funded and it's prep work for a project we will do.
Right. And it is fully funded? The 29 is covered?
We have an existing appropriation and capital currently has on your capital plan for FY24, the additional appropriation.
In term, we have an engineering appropriation for Bridge Street.
Correct.
Which more than encompasses what we would spend here.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Regardless of any future appropriation, we have it now.
Correct.
Okay. Either way, I don't think 12, 13,000 is going to move. If that's the difference on that project, we've probably got more challenges.
Yeah.
If, even if it's part of that, right? But it's all in that same area.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was fully funded within the current appropriation.
I think so. I think I got yes out of that.
We do.
Make a motion?
Unless, you stated that almost as I'm changing my mind.
Well, no, I was, I was concerned that we didn't have the full funding, but hearing that we do, I'm not going to change from my initial. I think we go ahead with, you know, our plan is to get Maple Lab completed. So we might as well get the engineering part done now. If we have the funds for it, let's do it. And then we have the engineered plans ready to go.
Correct.
Okay.
A little better inform that, that budget too.
Yes.
Yes, I would like a motion.
You're good as well.
I make a motion. We approve the engineering services, Bridge, Bridge Street, Maple Lab by Weston and Sampson in the total amount of $29,900 effective 3/13/2023.
Second. Just going to add that we add authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements. If you're okay with that friendly amendment?
I am.
Second as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review Engineering Scope of Work Amendment for the Sanitary System Evaluation Project. Come on up, Pete. I saw you ready.
Seems like we've heard about this one before.
Vaguely familiar. So we got a more detailed task list?
Yes.
Didn't really call out the different costs, but at least the details there.
I did at the end.
For each?
Yeah.
Did I miss it?
Six, four, five, two, and one, two.
Oh, I missed it. Okay. I got you.
Page four.
Sorry. I'm.
As much as we pushed back three or four different times, I was very, I appreciate the clarity on each one of those tasks. The original proposal, engineering proposal was very vague and didn't give us a lot to go by. So I know for, for whatever it's worth, I appreciate the greater depth of explanation that they put into it.
It made it, yeah. Made it feel better about what they're proposing and clearer why there's two separate tasks, for me at least. Did you have a chance to look up the record section, term section six at all? Historically around records and all that?
You're talking about in their general conditions?
Correct.
That was something that you all had discussed several years ago with them.
Okay.
My belief is that it has slipped back into the general conditions.
Versus whatever we agreed back then.
Right. If that's a issue, would you like me to push with them?
I don't know what you think. I think we should dig it up and refresh our memories on what we came to either agreement on or what we said had to happen from our legal standpoint and reiterate that for anything going forward and that that's in effect for anything existing regardless of what it says. I don't, I wouldn't hold this up for that change right now personally.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't remember what the language was when that was pushed back. I, I would say if it's not ownership, there's a clause in there that gives us unrestricted access at no additional fees for future use, you know.
Are you talking about what that does or doesn't give us, you mean?
Correct.
The changed?
Currently, you know, yeah, the, the current language unchanged from, you know, several years ago gives them sole ownership. And if we want it, oftentimes we have to, you know, for a fee, we can access those. And I would say if nothing else, even if ownership still lies with them, we have unrestricted access to obtain copies as needed.
Right.
So another option is to draft their own. Much likely we do a construction contract on our own with our own general conditions. We could draft our own general conditions of the terms for any engineers that want to do business with us.
You had talked about that. I do like that approach.
It would take a little time to get everything with the lawyers worded the way we'd like. But once that, once the initial work's done, it's just making sure that we stick to it going forward.
I think for a small project, you know, of 12,000, I wouldn't hold this up for that. But going forward, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing what that language looks like.
I agree. But low on the priority list.
Yeah.
Okay. We did not do that for any other engineers. We don't have anything we've, so far, right? In terms of engineers terms? No.
No. We've only done it for construction contracts and some of our software contracts. We've done our own terms and conditions.
Okay.
Looking at the three tasks and, you know, part of me was going to ask the question about whether or not Pete yourself or Darby had felt comfortable with doing task three yourself since all the work had already been done. But at that point, for continuity, for the extra 1,200, and I know we have the, you know, the capacity to fund that, I wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense to parse out just one task.
Right.
I was contemplating it.
I don't know. When I read the scope, it's, task three now reads like there's more to it than I initially thought from the short descriptions we had before versus task one, I guess. So I guess that's kind of my feeling. We have funding for this?
This was the one that we partially had.
Partially?
Yeah, we came up with.
This is the $4,000 that we had, and we may need to access about 8,000 from a reserve fund request.
Okay.
Is that? Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was just going to say to date, we haven't accessed or what have we accessed out of the reserve funds?
We have not.
Nothing yet, right? I didn't think so.
I don't believe so. Is that something you would request sooner than later? Or you would request at year end if the budget needed it?
Probably sooner than later, I would think.
What's the timeline on the C-MOM checklist going back? Isn't that the end of the, end of the month?
Yes, March 31st.
So if I'm reading that correctly, they still have the four weeks in there. Did you have a discussion if they could still get it done in time?
They, they said that they could, so it's just going to be a big push. I mean, worst comes worst case. I could see if we can get an extension from DEP.
The other question was, what are the ramifications from DEP for missing the deadline?
Depends how they feel.
I didn't know if there was an explicit, you know, notification from them about repercussions.
It would be NON and then from there, it's, you know, hopefully they would give us X amount of time to get it done.
To correct it.
Right.
Yeah.
So that would be my only comment is we should probably mark it up with that change. In, in schedule, I would just recommend that we strike the, or write, you know, mark it up after we print it and sign it. That the, within four weeks of the notice to proceed and instead by March 31st. Based on, I mean verbally, if they said that and we're not extending, if, if we're making the motion to move tonight, then I think that's reasonable. If you both are good with it.
Yeah, just knowing that we don't, we haven't guaranteed the funding source. Do you want to make a motion contingent on? I mean, all, all expenditures are contingent on, but because if we're going to have to do a reserve fund or find some other funding source that we don't currently have access to, approving it and then not knowing we can fund it may not be. We have the finance committee here.
I think, well, I was just going to say, you know, I would say if we want to, yeah, we can wait, make a motion after the joint or we can make one now and we could at least, you know, identify that this exists and that's the need and, and get just a feeling if they're okay with proceeding and seeing that and likely, likely, you know, funding it or if we should hold. If we hold, I don't, we won't make the timeline, but.
All right.
I guess, I mean, that's one thought, whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, we can always approve it, move forward and then figure out the funding. If the funding falls through, then we have to figure it out. Go figure something else out.
Mm-hmm. Put it on the warrant if we had to.
Sure. You looking for a motion?
If you're good with it.
Make a motion to approve professional engineering services for the Irving Sewer System Evaluation Survey through tie-in bond. Task one, two, and three in the amount of $12,800 and to authorize Town Administrator Brian Smith to execute all agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll just figure out how to pay for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Just because I circled it, because I crossed it off so before I mess up. Review of Surplus Equipment Request, Police Department second rate. Any questions?
No questions.
No concern.
Okay. With that, I'll call the joint meeting with the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee to order at 7:02 PM. Review of the FY24 budget requests and projected revenue. Did everybody see the small correction that Brian sent out this afternoon or at some point today?
There should be new printed copies in front of all the PNC members. And the only change was a line item reference in public safety. The amount's still the same, it's just the line item is different.
Am I missing what changed?
The very last one. It was labeled ladder.
I thought you said police.
Sorry.
Sorry.
EMS.
Got it. I'm better now. And we didn't have I originally, right? One I?
Correct. I also received the revised school department budget this afternoon, so that was also on your attachment.
That revised budget, Brian, though, does not change the dollar amount they cut, correct? It's just showing us the specific line items?
That reflects what occurred after their meeting on Thursday of last.
Okay.
Correct.
So where would everyone like to start? Do we want to have a discussion about the adjustments that the different groups have put forth and whether we are okay with them or have concerns or? Please?
For me, it just seems like a lot of the departments, you know, kudos to Glenn and Public Works for making as much cuts as he did. But our biggest budget is education, but they only came in with a $23,000 cut. Seems rather small to me.
I would agree.
Before we dive into all the numbers, I did have one question. Jen's here. I'm going to call on you, Jen.
Could you come up? Just make it.
Yep, yeah.
Please? In treasure capacity?
No.
Okay.
School, school committee capacity.
School committee chair?
Yeah. At the last meeting, the principal had mentioned several times that they were on a spending freeze in order to stay within the FY23 budget even with the additional costs of out of district. And I know you guys have gone over those numbers frontwards and backwards. And the, the reason I'm bringing it up is, is there a confidence level that the school will be able to stay within that? The reason I ask is we're holding $150,000 line item just in case the school can't, which means we're, we're double paying. We're, we're not only budgeting for FY24, working that in, but we're backfilling unfunded FY23 of another $150,000. So that would alleviate some of the. So that would alleviate some of the, um, a little bit of the burden if we didn't have to build it in twice in one fiscal year.
Are you talking about the out-of-district placement for the one?
Yeah, so we, we, uh, there was an original request of $308,000. Uh, the Select Board Finance Committee put forth, uh, on the STM for $150.
For this year.
For this year. Leaving a potential balance if the school is unable to fill that void, uh, within their current appropriation. We earmarked an additional $150 just in case, but I heard several times that they went on a spending freeze to ensure that they could meet that request. So I guess I'm asking, in your, in your estimation, do you think that the school will be able to meet that so that we can free up that $150 and not earmark it for, uh, that FY '23 appropriation?
I'm not 100%, I can absolutely ask the Director of Finance and Operations and confirm with her. I don't know if I can give you a direct answer today, so I apologize.
Okay.
But I absolutely, I can find that answer out for you.
Last minute, you know, on the spot, and I apologize for that.
No, I'm happy to reach out and, and find that for you.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's all I had for now. I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be other questions for you as the evening goes on.
Absolutely, I'm happy to answer, and I have some documentation too, if you wanted, if you want statistics on, you know, cost per pupil, um, other, other towns' cost per pupil, um, budget, past budget amounts, enrollment data. Um, so just let me know if you want any of that, because I had that from the last school meeting.
Thank you.
We'll probably ask you with your other hat on, OPEB at some point, too.
Yeah.
I see that we have representation from all the other departments.
Why don't we have more representation here from the school to answer questions?
You've got the chair.
Good question, you have the committee chair, but, right, I know we don't have the-
Superintendent and people.
Business office and, yeah. If you want to speak to that?
Do I have to speak to it, or?
Please.
I feel like that's my current struggle. Trying to work with the, the committee and, and all of the administration to go ahead and kind of understand the situation that we're in. Um, and that's kind of where, um, my personal frustration lies. Hoping to see some movement forward, um, hopefully, maybe we can have a different meeting on the 21st, we meet next Tuesday. I can do what I can do as myself. I haven't heard from any of the other committee members, um, as far as whether they were gonna show up this evening or not.
Jen, at that meeting on the 21st, um, that is a budget hearing though as well, so you guys plan to solidify the budget that night?
We're gonna, we're gonna continue to talk about it, absolutely, it's on the agenda, yep.
Okay.
Yes, I think we have a lot more work than the $22,400 that was up.
Yep, please, please.
One other question, and, and I'm sorry, Brian, I sent an email to you, but it didn't go to you, it went to me.
I was just, I was in my head going, how did I just?
I looked back and it said, "You're able to sell." But I was just wondering, a lot of the departments, um, attached a narrative, and I didn't see one from the school, did I miss it, or was it not there?
So the school's, uh, meeting occurred Thursday night, and so the conversation they had didn't result in the narrative, though there was a flurry of activity after the meeting. The revised budget document that I received today was the supporting documentation I've received to date.
Okay, thank you.
And I just offhand don't know, did we ask, did you ask, or did the school committee ask, or did the board ask for the superintendent and others to join us here? I believe that was, that is the standing invitation during budget, right?
Everybody's aware that you were continuing your budget conversation. If you're asking if I specifically asked the superintendent to be here tonight, I did not do that.
But in general, initial budget discussions with each department is expect, that, that's, that expectation is clear.
Correct.
So, I wouldn't expect tonight to be different, because this isn't us talking about putting it all together. This is, it's not gonna work, we need to make adjustments, how are we doing that? So, I just wanted to make sure the premise that I'm sitting here with of they should be here to speak to it, as well as you, which I appreciate you are, but. So. Okay.
No, don't worry about it.
Okay, I won't, I won't.
Yeah, you might, you're up here.
You might as well stay there.
That's what I want to talk about.
I'm sorry. I just was curious.
Part of what we had requested was to resubmit level funded, and if not, with explanations. From watching the meeting, I didn't even see that discussed, and I'm just wondering if that was something that was, I didn't get, I was kind of in and out watching the meeting, so I don't know if maybe I have missed part of that discussion, um, or if there is a reason why that was not put forth?
I think it was, I guess, my understanding of what the direction was, that we were supposed to go ahead and review every line item that we could possibly look at, um, not touch wages. But I wasn't aware of level funding, I mean, that was one of our options to start with. And I personally just pulled out a number, I felt like $200,000 was, was a, a goal for the evening, because I knew what we were in, a $800,000 deficit. So I figured at least $200,000 would have, would have been a, a good knock it down a little bit.
I am, I just want to make sure, I'm not misspeaking, that was the directive to all the departments, to level fund as much, and to?
From the board, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I don't want to speak for you, I only saw parts of it, but Scott, I did, uh, if I put you on the spot.
Sure.
You did, um, make some statements in the opening of that meeting.
I did.
And I believe you, if I heard you correctly, clearly said that very thing, that the board's request was that everyone level fund with the exception of wages and energy.
Utility, power, fuel.
Right.
Okay, so I guess I misunderstood, I thought these men level fund type meant like the whole budget, so.
No. No, we knew those, those items, yeah. So they were going line by line after that, trying to figure out which, which items, uh, needed to come back down.
Got it.
You know, and, and on quick glance, I'm looking right now at the, the document that was sent over, it looks like the only three line items that are increased outside of power and salary are networking and telecom lines 88, 89, sorry, 86, 88, 89, and 127. Not 127, I'm not sure why I wrote that on there, I think that was a dollar amount. Yeah, 91 with a dollar amount of 127. There's only a handful that have, uh, gone up, so looking at the overall budget, almost every line item in there is either level funded or reduced outside of salary and utility and power. I can't speak to, I, I think there was some conversation about the networking and telecom, uh, the materials. If I try to capture what was said about it, I think I would do a disservice and probably put out misinformation, so I don't want to speak to that directly. But there was an advocate for, uh, keeping that, because of the system that's being used and.
Right, the new system in central office and going forward, yeah. That was, they're having, they're having some upgrades right now.
I know one of the, um, departments they spoke a lot was preschool, and that it sounds like there is a fair amount of the cost of preschool subsidized by the taxpayers. What is the tuition rate for the preschool program per student?
It's currently $10 a day, it's on our agenda item for next, um, for the 21st, to go ahead and review that. Or increases.
I don't suppose off the top of your head, you know how that relates, correlates to the total cost? How much it offsets it?
Yeah, I know, I could group up my calculator real quick on that.
Do you know on average, what other communities charge for preschool per day?
20 to 30 a day.
We have, what, 18 students?
Current or anticipated?
Current.
So annually, you're talking an income of about $32,000 roughly. At $10 a day for 180 days for?
Case for one of the two teachers. Well, not even, yeah. Portion, portion of salary.
A portion.
And school choice is also on the agenda for, um, our next meeting as well. So we're trying to look at all revenue sources as we possibly could. I know we've always been a, no, not a school choice, but if we, we need to get some revenue, or we need to get some revenue, it's worth exploring.
That could go either way, if we did it though right and couldn't, costing us more.
Right, that's what I was having, yeah, having that conversation, because you get $5,000 back, but.
You don't know.
Right.
Right, okay. It's a bit of a gamble.
It is, it is.
Right, that's all I'm trying to say, it's not a guaranteed positive to the, to the overall budget.
Correct.
Even if we don't have to increase anything to take on more enrollment today, per se.
Mm-hmm. I know there was a request, uh, from somebody, it was put out to the superintendent and the director to look at revenue sources for the 31st and come fully prepared to discuss those, so instead of-
21st, yeah.
21st, sorry. Uh, you know, rather than always looking at the reduction side of where we can cut, are there truly ongoing, uh, revenue streams that we're not looking at embedding into this if we, if we have the capacity to do so? So, look forward to see what that brings out.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If you do school choice, the money falls at the pupil, right? At their cost, not at work charging?
Correct.
So we didn't have to make up the difference?
We would, uh, it would be, we'd be educating the child, so yes, and, and it would actually be.
And we're high compared to everybody else, so that could be detrimental.
Correct.
Well, it depends if the existing capacity could absorb it with no, with no change. Then it would be revenue, but if the needs or the, that there'd be a change in the overall services provided budget-wise, then that would increase.
So just to give a little clarity on how that works, uh, you do two votes, typically, it's in April or May. I know you'll talk about it in March, just because of the timing of it. The administration principal, superintendent will, uh, work with staff or whoever they deem appropriate to indicate what classrooms, uh, have availability specifically, and numbers, uh, of availability of seats if they were to go to school choice. They don't just open up that we're a school of choice and come one, come all, and as many as can come in, it doesn't work that way. So they have to look at capacity first and figure out what is appropriate for the school, what they can handle within the capacity of the school. And if those are approved, then the next vote, either later on that evening, or, you know, another meeting, is whether or not they want to be a school of choice and actually open those up, uh, and accept in people. So, you typically won't become a school of choice if you're going to, and, and take in more students that you have the capacity for, because then that's counterproductive, because then you have to go hire more staff, and it's not, uh, it's not prudent to do that. The only flip side of that is you do not have the authority to choose, it's a lottery, so who you get, you get. And so one of the down, one of the, uh, financial downsides that people talk about oftentimes is, uh, school choicing in with special needs, because that can happen. So as long as they're within, uh, the ability to, school choice, apply, and we're a school of choice, by lottery, you get who you get, and those, those costs do come to the, uh, receiving school, I believe. I'd have to double check that. Those special need costs may come from the sending school, I'd have to figure that one out. But that would be the only piece that gets tricky, is if they come with a special needs, uh, IEP or anything that would require additional support.
It is a higher reimbursement for special needs.
So.
It may not cover the entire cost, but yes, it does, it does.
Right.
It is a higher amount than the $5,000.
Thank you, I wasn't sure what the, what, what the dollar amount was, but.
But, but I think the potential upside is that there are, is capacity in some class, some grades today in classes to have more students with the same faculty supporting them, which could become a revenue, therefore, a revenue to the total budget. With those risks, I think that's the risk that I think of, is that, that we could end up with a placement that costs more than.
Does transportation follow too?
They're, they're responsible for transportation.
Yeah, school choice has to transport themselves. So I would just caution, if we're talking about, you know, wa, following the conversation that the school committee has about, um, school choice, that, that is not a revenue source that I would even look at as offsetting FY '24. Since we have never been a school of choice, we have no historical context on how many would come in, how, you know, uh, the sustainability of it, the longevity of, you know, or, or continuity of revenue stream coming in. Schools that are school of choice over the last 15 years will tell you historically how many come in, how many go out, and they can tell you what the revenue, uh, difference looks like over, uh, length of time. We don't have that. So even if the school committee chose to do it, you're planning on, you know, FY '26, '27 maybe, to get a couple of years' worth of history before you can, as you, you start embedding that in there as, oh, we're gonna have $50,000, and the next year, it's only two instead of 10. Now you're at a $40,000 deficit. You'd be very cautious about using that as a revenue stream until you have many years of historical data to really fall back on. Sounds nice, but I don't think it'll change FY '24.
I don't, I also don't think the numbers will be high enough to materially offset the difference that we're talking about here.
Oh, no. At 5,000 a student, you need, uh, you'd have to really pack the school to, to make a financial impact that we're, that we're talking about, you know? You'd need 30, 30 to 40 students, which is unheard of, and wouldn't happen, not, not in a elementary school.
Other questions for Jen? At the moment?
Just gonna capture one of the, the conversation pieces that came up at the last meeting, in case people didn't see it, weren't watching it, didn't review it in the end. There was some discussion about, um, un, an, an, one unfilled, uh, paraprofessional that, and I believe that paraprofessional has not been filled the entire school year. This wasn't somebody that came in, started the school year and then left, correct? This is a position that had not been filled all year?
I, I thought it was due to the retirement, but I could be wrong.
From, a retirement from last year?
No, there was a retirement.
Or retirement earlier this year?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, the, so the, the request or the conversation was about not backfilling that position, and therefore, you're not actually cutting anybody, that person through attrition has left. And the pushback was from the principal stating that the not filling that position would be a detriment to the teachers, the students, the school. So it's difficult when we're talking about where to find the money, when every item that's brought up is met with such a concern of, you know, utter paramount and, um, detriment, when I understand cutting a staff member is, that is not something to be taken lightly. This is people's livelihoods that we're talking about, if that's the position the school ends up going, or the town ends up going. But this would be cutting a position that currently is unfilled and has been unfilled for quite some time. While it's, you know, there was some notes on things like utilizing those positions to be able to backfill for teachers when, you know, Unified Arts call out or are not there, and they have the capacity then to allow the teachers to have their prep periods and do those things. Those are fantastic, but there are many districts in the area that find the capacity to honor the teachers' contracts, to honor the prep periods, to do all of those with less staff. So I, I find it difficult that with currently 11 paraprofessionals, that we couldn't still fill that, uh, need without the need for a 12th.
I could speak to that, I used to work at Pioneer, and we, we were just bare bones, and just when you didn't think that you could get any more bare bones, another position would be touched, and you make do, because you do it for the students, so you make it work. So I think. So I think, I think we just need to, you know, kind of portray the idea that we're gonna get through this and we're gonna make it work. So I'm hoping that other people can be on board with our meeting next time. And kind of get that understanding.
Could you kind of, and maybe between you and Scott could give a little history. One of the things that kind of, as someone who is not, doesn't have a child and doesn't, you know, doesn't have that type of relationship with Irving Elementary, one of the things that caught me was there was a couple of comments made about how in a, in a normal school, things like field trips, teachers have Amazon wish lists. It is not unusual for a list to go home at the beginning of the school. I remember bringing one home way back when from Holy Trinity, saying, you know, we need a couple boxes of tissues and this, that, and the other thing. And the response from Principal Candido was that that was not Irving's level of normal. So could maybe between the two of you provide a little history as to why Irving seems to be such an outlier when it comes to our school and why we are definitely, it feels like we're almost doing everything we can to not be normal?
I can give you a very, very succinct answer to that. We've always had the funding. It's very simple. We've had the funding to not have to ask parents to supplement the educational costs. That's, we've been able to have it in the budget to do those. The, you know, supply closets were for all of the nuanced things such as little notebooks and pens and pencils and markers have, the reimbursement for that has always been at a hundred percent. There's always been, I don't know if we've ever denied anybody reimbursement, if there's anything that needs to be purchased for the classroom for those incidentals. Whereas in many districts, there's a finite amount of money to go for those supplies. And anything beyond that, you have to make deal with what you have or find an, an alternate source such as the wishlist like. I've utilized the school's funding for everything I needed and I fell short on these few items. Parents, if you don't mind kicking in some pencils and notebooks.
You shop the staple sales in the beginning of the year and you stock up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of them do. I used to see the bills coming in and, and even at the end of the year when they have the, you know, the last hurrah sale, you know, the teachers are great about using those sales to bulk up so that they're not overspending. So, you know. But the simple answer is we've had the capacity to not have to roll those costs outside of raising appropriation budgets. That's the simple answer.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a follow-up to that, so I, I would presume and it maybe it predates all of us, but at some point in the past when that wasn't a norm, right, where, where teachers or other parents had to fund that, I assume we just kept having capacity without going over two and a half, without whatever, and other districts didn't. And so that's kind of maybe how it diverged. And we just always kept covering it because we could. And others just didn't have the capacity anymore. So they started cutting back?
Yes. My, my assumption is that the neighboring communities around us have hit their levy limit concerns much earlier than Irving did. Irving has hit it in FY twenty-four. That's the, that's the time that we're hitting the real levy limit concerns. Other districts and communities have hit that decades ago. So the norm is what we're falling into, but just a lot later than many other municipalities around us.
Well, we're not there yet. We may get there.
We may.
But, but we do have history of this because with the library, just before it opened, there was a list of items that were still needed. And people gave money toward that. At least I did. Was, was that, did you make that up?
We'll leave that one for discussing off the record.
Charlie and I were on that committee. We will have bills back. No, we will have bills back.
That's a little lost out.
That was a fundraising list. It was, it was legitimate.
No, I think that was a pledge from, and I'm drawing from vague memory because it's been, it feels like a century since then. I believe that was part of some of the pledges from the library, staff, the building committee, like all the groups, the friends to like, try to raise some offset to the five million something dollar library to identify a few items that would line up well with donations and to, to go out and, you know, try to, try to bring some of that in to offset it. So. I think that was just trying to help, you know, like everything. All, not to pick on the police department, but chief's here. So, you know, they, they reinstated the gift fund for, you know, the K nine program and things. So although it's budgeted, you know, just doing as much as they could to offset that. I think that's where the library came from. Kind of ahead of, may, maybe not, maybe not the K nine program, but just ahead of, we have this expense that's probably more than the budget can handle. So how do we help try to do what we can to offset it?
So I'm just gonna throw this out there. You know, as a select board, we have line item discrepancy over everything but the school. The school's budget as far as, you know, appropriation, once it's appropriated, the, the school committee and the administration have line item control over how that's spent. And sitting through the last school committee meeting, it was, I would say, a bit awkward to hear some of the, you know, requests about line item cutting. When you start getting into personnel, and I think actually Principal Candido mentioned this herself saying, ultimately it's administrative. You can make recommendations on where you, you know, what line items you want to see cut. But ultimately there's contracts that they have to follow. There's regulations they have to follow. So really her request was if there's going to be a dollar amount cut outside of the twenty-two four that was put forward, this was before the vote happened. If there was any additional cuts, that it just be a lump sum dollar amount and you allow the administration to do their task of looking at what makes the most sense for the education of the students. And, and I would agree with her. That's, you know, to have boards sit out here and dictate what line items need to be cut and what staff members need to go if that's where you're going. That's really outside of the purview of any of these boards to do that. It's really about, we're looking at how much financial capacity do we need to build in to ensure that we can balance our budget? And where are we looking to get that from? You know, to date, we've gotten six hundred and thirty thousand or so from, you know, and that's inclusive, I think, of the twenty-two, correct, or the six twenty-nine? So about six hundred thousand from the departments outside of the school. Now, in fairness, I think the first scenario that was accepted previously.
Sixty thousand, sixty, sixty-three thousand, I believe.
Lower than the initial.
Correct. Yep.
So from the very initial presentation that they gave, they've cut about eighty-four, eighty-five thousand. I don't want to lose, lose sight of the fact that they did have that initial cut from the first time when we pushed back and said, this is not gonna balance. And so then they came back with scenario one, two, and three, discussed those, went with a scenario that pulled back an additional sixty-something thousand. So just to make sure that that is incorporated somewhere or at least noted. But if we're gonna push back on any, any department that we don't have line item, like the school, it's really figuring out, are we asking them for a dollar amount that we need to get to? I mean, when the motion was made at the last school committee meeting, it was, I don't know if they captured it in minutes, but it clearly said, well, without direction from the select board, this is the motion we make. And if there's, if the select board wants us to cut more, they can tell us how much. And that's what created the motion for twenty-two thousand four hundred. That's where we stand today. I don't know if the finance committee or anybody else on the select board has any other thoughts on how we move forward because as it currently stands, we're still a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in the red. And that is not really capturing what we historically have done for raising appropriation for capital. We're about two hundred and seventy-five shy of the mark of, I think you had requested four hundred, which would be a.
Capital met and capital feels adamant that at least four hundred thousand has to remain in the budget for capital.
Which would, which would put us, you know, that's another two seventy-five on top of the one fifty. So four and a quarter. You know, and, and, you know, it's not, that's not something that we could, I don't think, a number going back to the school of four and a quarter. That number should have been talked about two months ago. If, if, you know, that's a big number to push back on.
But to bring a five, six hundred thousand increase, I mean.
Yeah.
Like, not to, sorry.
No, I, I get it. I get it.
I guess, like, are you, I don't wanna.
Well, no, I just, so if, you know, if we don't have to, if we can get an answer on whether or not the current expenditure projections will allow them to maintain their budget and not expend more than their FY twenty-three current budget with the supplemental that we're already planning to give them of the, of the one fifty. I think, was it one fifty or two? I don't remember. One fifty.
One fifty on the special account. Yep. So you're saying if we didn't need the one fifty, then we could roll that.
That is, we're not looking for four hundred at that point. We're looking for the.
Well, no, it's. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Right, see what I'm saying? Cause we're earmarking FY twenty-three potential. But I heard from the principal that they have been really pulling back to, at our request to try and get to the end of the school year within their appropriation plus the one fifty that we are putting on the STM.
So like two hundred, two hundred seventy-five thousand you're looking for for next?
Well, I don't think we're ready to give you a number.
Yeah, we're not.
If, if that's what we leave here with. I don't think that's.
That's, that's something that the town is looking at. I don't know if we're, that's something that, you know, if that's a number that we're pushing back on the school yet. We haven't, we haven't gotten there yet. I think I've taken enough airtime.
Do we have our, our cost and benefit analysis of the one school, school teacher position that's currently unfilled?
The cost, oh, what, what the, what was allocated for it? I believe it's thirty-one thousand.
Inclusive of benefits?
Uh, yes. So, yes. Yep, yep. So it would be more than that. So.
Fifty-one or ish, right?
Yes.
I was just gonna, you had made reference of the six hundred-ish thousand of proposed reductions from other, all departments, boards, committees except the school. Including things like benefits which really weren't adjusted, right? But just including everything RNA outside of capital, all of our operating costs, excluding all education. It's about a ten percent reduction because it's just about six point five million for the rest, inclusive of all the benefits, which includes school benefits, obviously. Just in terms of the scale of what that adjustment was and the other five point eight or five point nine is education and ten percent.
Couple of weeks ago.
Would make, uh, would, would get us to probably more of where we normally are. Now I understand that's six hundred thousand dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars, but I'm not saying that that is or isn't doable, but.
A couple of weeks ago, we talked about travel and options. And did we hear anything back about that?
You're talking about procurement of vans.
Talking about transportation.
I was trying to figure out what trip we were going on.
Travelation, transportation.
I have not been given updated information yet on that, on that topic.
It was explored at our meeting as well. There's, they're saying that we still need a transportation specialist. But I did ask that. I, I believe that that was part of Director and Finance of Operations position. And she had responded with, if she does it for Irving, then she has to do it for all the other districts. And currently she's not being compensated for that.
Just to make sure I followed that meeting well, we need a person to manage maybe two vehicles?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't think that we needed that.
The, the pushback from the committee, and I don't think it was just you. I think there was other members on the committee that pushed back on that and said that, you know, the fire chief does their own vehicles, the police chief does their own vehicles, the highway superintendent does his own vehicles. They all ensure that they get to and from for, you know, routine maintenance and they fill the tank and they do the oil changes in-house. They don't need to hire any specialists to ensure that the oil is changed and the tires are rotated and the gas is filled. So I'm not sure where that need of a transportation coordinator would come from. I don't see the need.
Yeah, I don't either.
I would agree with you, Ms. Icorn, that I think that falls under that director's responsibility anyways. Although it hasn't been done, it doesn't negate the fact that it would still fall under that role. But that would be up to the, I believe, the Director of Student Services and Finance falls under Union Twenty-eight, correct? So that would be a discussion with Union Twenty-eight. If it's not in there, it'd be modifying that. That's, even Irving School Committee doesn't have the authority to change that job description. That comes under Union Twenty-eight.
Just to, to add to that, where I left that conversation with the administration was a request to, even in draft form, come up with a position description that would address the operation of the vehicle plus any of the coordination work with a discussion of what the compensation would look like, what the number of hours per week were anticipated to be so that you could even have this conversation. To date, I haven't seen that. So I had asked for that information. If it is a stated need, I think it's fine to put that need on the table in front of you all. You all can discuss whether or not that's something you can fund. But I don't even know what we're talking about cost-wise because I haven't seen that draft description yet.
My pushback, none of that's our responsibility. That's the school's responsibility. We're not managing a transportation coordinator for two vehicles at the school. We have a fleet of twenty-thirty across the town that are managed by the department heads. That's not a cost or a, a, a position or anything that is the admin, the town administration's responsibility to manage. And I think we need to reinforce that with the superintendent. I said it to her when she was here at the table and looked to you every time about who was going to arrange and sort out this transportation issue. It's not a Irving administration transportation issue. It's a school transportation issue. And so we can offer some help and support in what we know about doing it. But we have plenty of our own. We have how many dozens of departments to help and assist? That's for them to sort out.
Yeah. And internally, I think somebody else also mentioned, and I don't know who made the comment, but you have a Director of Maintenance at Irving Elementary School that is in charge of maintaining everything at the, at the school level. So it would make sense that if you, even if it wasn't at the director level in the school, you have somebody who has the capacity to modify and maintain a couple of vehicles. I'm not sure who maintains the tractor, the snow blowers, the.
Some of it, some of it we take out. You know, we, it's, I guess, again, chief's here, I'll pick on him. You know, some of it, they'll shuttle a vehicle, you know, with another vehicle to wherever it needs service. And, you know, to the service providers that we use traditionally. For stuff we can do in-house, we take care of it.
They have equipment there already.
Oh, oh, you mean they, they do it there? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant for the town.
No, I meant for the school. There's currently equipment there and they coordinate with somebody to get those taken care of when things break. Same coordination level would happen, I would imagine, if a vehicle needed something. That's, again, we'd be waiting for figures from the administration on what that might look like.
Right, that was my point too. We, we had that hundred eighty-seven, or hundred eighty thousand allocated for that. And if we didn't quite use all of that, if we did make some staffing cuts, maybe they would know by the summer, they could bring back a position if they didn't use all of it. Because I know, you know what I mean? I know that everyone was very, you know, kind of worked up about losing positions. So therefore it was a little bit of reassurance if we were to not have to use all that one eighty-four transportation.
Correct.
Kelly, I, I know you had your hand up a while ago. So before I, we keep going, I was thinking we're gonna have a shift in topic for a minute and if you had a question still?
Yeah. I'm surprised I actually remembered it.
I apologize. It's been a while.
It'll be fine. So I know Jen said that they're gonna be talking about school choice possibilities. But I know there's also people who have school choice out of Irving. Where does that money show up? Because I, because I know the town has to, or school has to pay for those students to go elsewhere. How many of those, like if we could bring back those students, then we wouldn't have to be talking. And I know that's more of a school committee, but.
We don't have the numbers of students, but we're currently projected two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in charges for, for, uh, out of this, or school choosing out.
And is that in the school budget or is that a separate?
It happens on the cherry sheet. So it, it happens as a, as a transaction that the Department of Revenue does. So before we even get the money that's allocated to the town, the charges are already removed.
So, yeah, I mean, it's like, why isn't that a discussion? Like, let's find out how to bring those students back. Like, what's happening that's pushing these students away from Irving? Irving used to be a sought-after school, so why is it not? And why are all these people leaving?
Good questions.
Do we have data on where they choice to, out of curiosity?
What was the question, sorry?
Do we have data on where choice students choice to?
Um, I don't have that.
Uh, in general, do we get it?
Um, Caitlin would have that, yes, yep, yep.
That just might inform what, what, what potentially is out there that they're seeking versus here, like, just to inform that.
Along with what Kelly was just suggesting, do we actually like sit and speak with parents and ask like, why? Is it because we're not offering a program the child is interested in, or, like, do we find out why they are choosing to leave the Irving district?
I don't know personally. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have.
I can speak to that a little bit. In the past, uh, that has been done. And we're going back to probably two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, somewhere in that area. There was some surveys done and, and questions about retention, and, and specifically reaching out to parents that had choiced out and figuring out, you know, if they're willing to discuss, you know, some of the shortfalls or the reasons why, and if there was things that they could internally change for retention. So that's not a new concept, that's been done, uh, that was a decade ago.
I don't believe it's being done currently.
No.
I feel like we would know, or they would say, they usually give us, you know, our updates, you know, with the principals update, but I could be wrong.
It's, so, um, to Kelly, good question, Kelly. It's a good question. The two thirty-five in state charges is primarily then choice. Cause our total estimated is two thirty-five, and you said it's over two, that's school choice fees.
Do you want the details?
No, but just, just understanding that out of our, what, seven hundred and thirty thousand of state receipts, the two thirty-five that gets taken out is almost all school choice.
Correct.
There's very little other costs. Find that interesting? Didn't have a really think through what's in that charges.
There's a few other small line items, but it's predominantly choice.
There, I think there's been a little bit of discussion, and I understand if we can't get into the detail of it, but of, I guess, insourcing the special education needs instead of transporting and paying out of district tuition.
Yes, we did have that conversation at the meeting, and kind of like, doing what we can do to keep our students where, where they are at.
Right.
Versus, yeah, doing everything in our power to be able to keep them in-house.
Do, and if that's less than four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it sounds like better choice. But, uh, is that something that you expect the school's going to work on, or is school committee's gonna get like, comparison on what that would take? I don't know if you anticipate it.
I had reached out to the Director of Student Services, and she said that is currently, um, they're looking at a Union Twenty-eight, not just Irving, but a Union Twenty-eight program to be able to go ahead and if we have any, um, if we're not meeting the needs of all students within Irving, that they could, we, trying to put a program together with all four schools.
To be, to be fair though, I don't, and I think, uh, you know, one of the audience members had mentioned, you know, bringing back programs like life skills and things like that, that, you know, um, could be used as a mechanism to address some of the reasons why we would out of district place somebody. I, I don't think it, I don't think it would make sense, or I don't think it would be feasible, that they would be able to make those modifications in such a way that it would affect FY twenty-four. I think you're talking about a future change. In theory, it, it sounds great that we would, we have a potential of, say, four hundred thousand dollars for out of district, and that we say, use half of that to augment our current program, and then miraculously, those students will come back. There's a different body of people that discuss out of district placements. Uh, the parents have to be on board with it, there's a full process under, under the regulations. So even if we were to make those modifications, it may help from having to send other people out. If people are aware that we can retain in-house, I don't know if it would, if make, uh, enact the change that we're talking about of bringing those two students back. There's just so many moving pieces to an out of district placement that I'm not sure that that would be the end result. I'm not saying it wouldn't.
Sure.
But I can't imagine that between now and the start of school in end of August or early September, that miraculously, we would have a program that's built out to the point where those students would come back.
Yeah, that is a question that I had posed to the Director of Student Services, and she said they're, they're working on that Union Twenty-eight, but it wouldn't be possible to go ahead and, and bring these two students back, um, for FY twenty-four.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, not just that nuance, but I was gonna say, no matter what, I don't think we're going, it doesn't sound like we're gonna hear on transportation, on, you know, bringing them back, uh, any of those kind of scaled changes in time for the budget to go to town meeting, and probably not even for FY twenty-four, but, or not, some of them not implemented necessarily in full and offsetting that cost in twenty-four, but definitely not gonna know it in time for the ATM.
I don't, I don't believe so.
I mean, that sounds like it's likely off the table.
But, yes, that's not what I, I anticipate.
But can I ask why? Because I have watched in other departments when something is needed and we're trying to figure something out. I mean, we can actually move things pretty quickly when we need to. Um, so I'm gonna be really honest, it feels like there is some foot dragging from departments in regards to this, that things have been requested, they're not coming through. Do we know what the superintendent's concerns or the principal's concerns are, or the business managers, and why they're not able to provide? You know, is it a capacity thing that they just simply don't have the time to look into it? Is it that they are just not interested in doing it, and they just don't wanna have to come out and publicly say that? Like, we are in such a budget crunch right now, that it's time to start beating around the bush and just coming out and saying, this is what we need to do, this is gonna work, this isn't gonna work. And, and so, I'm.
Agreed, I've asked all those questions, and I'm, I'm faced with, it's confidential, and they can't tell me further details because of the, the student's confidentiality.
I understand not releasing information about the student, but we're talking about the ways that we can potentially buy vehicles to, I don't wanna know anything about the kids. We're trying to put a program in to help benefit the, the, the students, and, and future students down the road. So to me, these two particular students are, are a moot point, because we are looking to institute something to better for years down the road for any student that comes through the district. And, and so the fact that it seems like we can't get straight answers, Frank, it, it's frustrating. And, and to be honest, the fact that the principal and the superintendent isn't here tonight when they have a school that has a, a major budget concern is also frustrating.
I absolutely share those frustrations as well.
I know you do.
Goes back to when Kelly said, okay, we're school choice and kids out. We're high per, 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 per student. That whole goes with the kid to the different, to a new district, right? So, are they making out more money out for us, for our students to go to them? Because if we're, say, we're, we're twenty-eight thousand a student, and you're going toward another school district that's eighteen or twenty, is the whole twenty-eight going with that student?
No.
No.
Just with the.
So, school choice is five thousand dollars. For general education, it's, it's capped at five thousand dollars per student.
Really?
Yes.
So forty-ish students are chusing out of Irving?
Forty-plus are on the books.
Yeah, yeah, so forty, yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't, I mean, that's from one to twelve, we're not talking about just elementary.
Primary and second.
Yeah, yep.
Correct, that's all total rates.
Yes, yes, yes.
So if, if they don't, if our secondary, uh, our, our tuition agreement is with Gilmonigew Regional. So if they go anywhere, well, if they go to tech school, that's a different reimbursement, that's a different allocation. But anywhere other than Gilmonigew or the tech school, it's at the cost of five thousand dollars that are paid to that district.
So, so Irving Elementary, Franklin Tech is not in the two thirty-five, it is, but it's not, and that's the assessment we're paying, right?
Correct.
Or Gilma, Gilmonigew, is that what you said?
Gilmonigew is part of the assessment we pay.
So, so all of those are no extra.
Right through twelfth grade.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, well, that spreads it out further, I wasn't thinking about it through twelve.
I mean, forty kids over, you know, twelve grades.
Well, and if it's special needs, it's to the age twenty-two.
Correct. And if there's any with special needs that have choiced out other places, outside about a district placement because of IEPs or whatever reasons, but and their own volition, some, that's a higher amount, that's not just five thousand. So, you might only have thirty-five if some of them have a different allocation of, of funds that go with that. We don't get all that level of detail, that's kept confidential.
That is, the transportation, you wanna get two vans for, what, two individuals? Is that basic? So what happens if these, once these individuals dip beyond Irving? We're stuck with the vans?
We've surplus. We've surplus, uh, you know, equipment all the time. There's no reason why if we, if we felt there wasn't a need in, uh, three, five, seven years to keep those, and they're still viable, surplus property all the time and sell it.
I see what you're getting at, but even, but I, I mean, four to six years is probably not a bad useful life in terms of, you know, what we've done historically. You know, vehicles, but I also would say, while I materially agree, if it saved us money on four twenty or a hundred and eighty thousand a year for the period that we expect to need them, then it's a net savings, even if we have an asset we don't need when we're done.
Correct.
That we might be able to recoup something on.
Yep.
We'll give Jennifer a break.
I think we can let her out of the hot seat.
Yeah, she's been in the hot seat a while.
She's been sitting there real bit.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your information.
Doesn't mean we won't call you back. Why don't we go through some of the other stuff? I'm, I'm sure we'll come back to this before we are, you know, done discussing budget tonight, but, um, work through any other questions, concerns, thoughts on the other adjustments, changes proposed. Maybe I'll start with OPEB, just.
We just let her go.
Yeah, never mind, I'm like, great, there we go, yeah, never mind, we won't do that. I know, it's, it's fine, we don't need to do that right now. Anything specific people would like to do, or you wanna go down through the reduction, why don't we just go down through the reduction, start administration? Is there questions, concerns about the proposed reductions from all the other departments?
I was just gonna say, Brian, thank you for the, uh, the memo, especially with all the.
Helpful?
Yeah, with all the notations and the, uh, the information on the, on each item, it was very helpful, thank you.
I will also compliment a bunch of the narratives, I mean, they were really, I think Deb mentioned it earlier, but the narratives are very informational, so.
Sorry, department heads, I'm gonna want them next year for budget season.
I was just gonna say, that kinda set, you can set a standard on what you could provide for detail.
You guys set a very, very good standard, and they were wonderful, and I, I, I read them all and went, oh, we should really have this right as budget season kicks off.
You asked if there was any concerns, or, you know, so, having also read through, I don't have anything specific, but I was just gonna echo, um, I appreciate the level of depth that each department looked at and, and the justification and reasoning that they put forward for why they were not ready to decrease certain line items and, and maintain that level of service and level of funding, so I appreciate that. And for the extensive cuts that were made in, in the requests, so. For specific questions, I'll defer back to you.
Does anybody have any? I mean, I have a few, but.
I have a couple.
Either way, why don't we start with just top-down administration, anything there? Or, or general government, I guess I should say.
Yeah.
I have a question on the revaluation, the special article.
Yep.
So it's a reduction from moving money from existing FY twenty-three accounts to fund, into the special article instead of raising appropriate free cash in the coming year.
Correct.
But has, but there's no expectation that the original amount, including that twenty-five, is the continuing need in the future every year from like an operational standpoint, correct? Or you don't have that sense, right?
You will, no, you will anticipate seeing a request that the special article is reintroduced la, next year.
And FY twenty-five at twenty-five thousand higher, so from a, from a ability to continue operating at the level we need to, it, it's not a reduction that should come out of that model.
It's a one-time saving.
It's just a one-year savings, it's not a operating expense reduction.
Correct.
It's a one-time.
Right.
It's like plugging free cash one year instead of raising appropriate, it's not a sustainable reduction.
Correct, which means that next year, you'll be starting with a twenty-five thousand dollar deficit.
Correct.
For that one line item.
And I'm only, I know it's just one, and it's just twenty-five, but the whole reason, I mean, to some degree, we're having this conversation, is because if we fund all this with free cash, what happens in FY twenty-five, twenty, yeah, twenty-five, cause we won't have, we can't guarantee we would have the funding to continue at that level, so.
Now.
I just wanna keep in mind, we don't have too many of those, because that leaves a big deficit for a year, we're not even in yet with only a two and a half expected change.
Just something to think about is still utilizing that amount of money that's, uh, was going to be turned over to that special article. If we can find another use for those funds, say, a, a one-time capital expense.
Sure.
Uh, an IT expense, something that was gonna come out of free cash anyways, and utilize it for that, and then you still see that net reduction for this year, but it's for a one-time expense rather than zeroing out that line item and then seeing it reintroduced next year.
As free cash next year, yeah, it's a, it's a free cash now, free cash later, is what you're saying, right?
At least, at least that way, the line item doesn't, uh, we don't overexpend on, say, capital when we could utilize this for capital instead, and then keep the raising appropriation the same. Net result for FY twenty-four would be the same. But FY twenty-five would be more, uh, in line to be attainable.
Grounds maintenance program? Just that reduction is coming from what?
Specifically out, so the grounds maintenance.
Or the expectation of not needing it.
So the grounds maintenance, uh, is allocated to certain sections of the budget, you've got the general maintenance parking lots, uh, front of town hall and fire stations, things like that. You've got the parks, which is a separate appropriation, and then you have the cemeteries, which is another. So you all, um, I think it was a year or so ago, increased after the newest contract had been procured. You'd increase both ground maintenance on the general government side, as well as the park maintenance side. We have come to experience that so far, the, the cost has been higher on the park maintenance side and less on the, on the, um, general government side. So this is a proposal to reduce on the general government side. Where there's not a proposal to reduce the ground maintenance and the park maintenance side. I, I think we can do this, I just put the caveat on this that that contract is up for renewal, so we will have to do a competitive procurement on that.
So.
In FY twenty-four?
Correct. So we will be going back for procuring, but we've had capacity in this lineup before. So from that standpoint, I'm not concerned about proposing that reduction.
But we do have, we do have the concern that depending if we have the incumbent or not, could change it by thirty percent or more, potentially, right? I mean, we, we have a potential concern that it could go up double-digit percentage or more if the procurement comes out with a different, without the incumbent in the list.
That's true, but I would have a similar situation in, in ground maintenance for parks as well.
Yeah, yes.
Correct, right, we would be in the same situation, so I would have to talk to you about a budget adjustment.
That could be a big shift, that's all.
Something for us to monitor.
May not be this year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, at some point, it will be.
Yeah, you know, you're right.
Current vendor's not gonna continue to do it forever.
I can't imagine.
Every time he tells me no. Every time he says no, he's not doing it again, he, he bids again, so we'll see.
We'll cross our fingers for at least another year. Uh, and then past management, so I know there's been some issues, do we really not need to?
That was a new request, um, that we had put on earlier in this, this budget cycle. And, um, to date, so far, town hall's using the service and the fire station's, uh, number two is using the service. The other sites have not requested to use the service, so it still leaves a little capacity.
Anybody else with anything on general government? Public safety?
I just noticed that, not just public safety, but most, most of the departments actually had a, a decrease for the electricity. Does that mean we overshot it, which would be great? Because that's fantastic, because that's the case.
So I had given the fifty percent higher.
Yeah.
And I think I voiced last time, hopefully, the two seasonal charges wouldn't be that high when netted out, and so my understanding is a lot of them, and I think one, at least one of them kind of spoke to that in their narrative, took kind of what's it been doing?
Well, that's fantastic.
And then projected that, so.
But it's lower than what we thought, so that's great, it's over twelve thousand.
Fuel, fuel ones have gone up though, like heating and stuff, so not all net savings, but or net savings, I think, in all cases, but not all reductions.
Yeah, and there's still even the potential that that, we may not even capture all of that, I think, Chief, I'm gonna put you on the spot. There was a, in your narrative, you talked about the historical of anywhere from a hundred and thirty-seven a month to twelve hundred. You know, and so we were earmarking about nine hundred to average it out. And who knows what that trend looks like, you know, if it comes in at seven fifty, then all of a sudden you've got an extra couple of grand at the end of the year, so you never, you know.
Yeah, hopefully rates go near where they were and don't go up as much next time seasonally, but who knows?
Yeah.
Questions on public safety wages? Or, I'm sorry, public safety, not wages.
I. Chief Holst, please come join us in the hot seat.
We have two people who get to alternate tonight, either being the example or sitting in the hot seat.
Thank you, sir.
Shoot.
I am sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. We don't like to say shoot when you're around. Send it. I like that better.
So in your narrative, you talked about completely removing the cadet program.
Correct.
Yet when we first talked about your budget, it sounded like this was, was a program that would be incredibly beneficial to the police department. So can you just expound? I guess my, I, I'm gonna be really blunt with all of you tonight, so my question is, quite frankly, are you cutting it just because of the budget scenario that we're facing? Or do you feel it's a program that could actually be delayed? In a perfect world, if our budget was not a problem, would you be keeping this in your budget?
Sure. No. I think my explanation for wanting it makes sense. Or I wouldn't have asked. We've been operating without it. Can we operate without it? Yes. We can. Would it, it was like, would it be nice? It would probably be higher than it would be nice. But is it essential? No.
Okay.
But if we have any attrition, we lose any people, any officers?
Yeah.
We don't have, we're not, we don't have anyone queued up, we don't have this program in place to potentially rapidly offset that gap. And we know the hiring market is only going to get more challenging for qualified officers.
And you're looking at.
There is no partially qualified officers anymore, so it's just is or isn't. Right?
Yeah.
Did, did you start to say something, Scott, or?
Well, I wanted to go, I, I can't remember, in your narrative, and you can probably pull this right off the top of your head, the academy line item, is that zeroed out completely?
Yes.
So my concern is the two of them working in tandem don't make sense. By removing the cadet program, I understand it went for, we, we, you brought forward the cadet program as what would feel like a need at that time, based on the dire staffing that we had for a long period of time. And this was one of the ways to offset that for the future. And hearing you now saying, it, it went from a need to a want per se, because where we sit staffing-wise and who we have at the table and, you know, the longevity that we feel we have in town to be able to maintain that. But if there is attrition, if you don't have a cadet program and you don't have a line item to put somebody through an academy, you're left with what would be a staffing shortage. You don't have an immediate ability to backfill unless you hire somebody from a pool that's already academy-trained, which we have seen over the last few years, is difficult to come by. So I'm concerned about the two of them together.
Yes, I, I, I appreciate that and, and I agree. You know, contractual now, there's, we have obligations, the clothing allowance being one of them. My clothing allowance is set up that contractually, we can meet those needs. The idea behind the new hire slash academy line was to, when we hire somebody, to get them that ballistic vest, to get them, you know, summer uniforms, winter uniforms, a coat, to get the equipment boots. Again, I, I was, I, we were asked to cut, so I, I, I've presented what I think we can operate with, obviously, yes. If we lose somebody, that puts us in a situation that we have been in, I don't want to ever go back there. It was not pleasant. But I, I mean, I, I'm not trying to say you guys are the bad people, but you asked us to cut, so that's, that's where, that's where I felt, I, that's where I felt the cuts could be made. I, I've had this conversation with the town administrator and he, he says that he feels that too much was cut. And I appreciate that, I appreciate the support, I'm just trying to do what. Well, him and I haven't had that conversation and I completely agree with him, but I would just, for all of us, we're not asking you because we're critical that you shouldn't have offered it or you did it wrong. We're, I think, challenging whether that's really okay to cut, right?
I appreciate that.
Because we did ask and I think.
Well, I.
I think I, I'll reiterate, I think we all appreciate the amount of money that are, you know, all of the other departments put forward, right? I mean, save for the school.
I, I would say while I'm sitting in the hot seat though, I don't want to cut the K nine program, I'm, I'm very adamant about that, I think that you guys saw my write-up for that, and so I, I guess part of me was like, these are areas where maybe we can make it work, but these are, so I just wanted to be clear that there were areas that I absolutely do not want to cut and, and that being one of them, so.
I think you did exactly what we asked. And I personally look at the K nine as something that we committed to doing already this year.
We've already done it.
And now it becomes part of our base twenty-three. Because there's, there's wages, there's the K nine, there, there's commitments there, there's investments in the assets and I, I don't see that as something that you can say is not level funded to keep it, because we put it in twenty-three as though it was part of twenty-three for me. And some of the pieces of it, you just can't undo those. And they don't really scratch the surface compared to some of these things. Can I ask you on the academy real quick?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. Is that one? Is that the estimated dollar amount for a single person, single academy?
So back, we had a meeting, geez, it must have been a year or so now. The, the conversation had come up, it was either at Western Mass Chiefs or Franklin County Chiefs, and they were talking about what the budget is to send somebody to the academy. I don't have the numbers in front of me, Chairman Smith, so forgive me, but you are looking at a six-month salary and you're looking at three grand for the academy, and then you're looking at, all the academy has to have special equipment, khaki equipment. So I think, I think the average was seventy-five hundred to a thousand-ish for, you know, ammo, equipment, academy costs.
Plus wages?
Excluding wages.
Okay. So, but fifteen wasn't supposed to be inclusive of equipment costs plus wages, right? It's still not high enough, right? I don't think five is enough for the wages difference, is it?
No, the fifteen was for the ballistic vest and for the uniforms that they would need outside of the academy. Typically, we buy, you know, two pairs of pants or four pair of pants, two long sleeves, two short sleeves. Things like that, gun belt.
The academy was inclusive of going and the things you need to be there and the materials.
Correct.
And, and supplies, it's not, the wages are in the wages.
Correct, and if we got somebody that did have the academy or the post, the bridge academy, then that would have probably, you know, that money would have been cut in a third probably just for the equipment, for just the P D purposes of what they need for to perform their duties as, as an officer. And I've never sent anybody to the academy, so I, those, these are numbers that I just try, I've, I've talked with other chiefs and, and trying to figure out what we have spent on equipment, so they're not hard, fast numbers, I, you know.
I was just, is that one time, one, two, three, you know, if it was two or three people?
No, one.
Which I didn't think it was, but I wanted to make sure.
My concern is, all of our departments, I greatly appreciate everything that everyone, the department heads did. My concern is everything that gets cut right now means that there is the perspective that it doesn't come back. And so I am a little concerned when I see programs such as the cadet program be offered up on the topping block, because personally, I feel that's an important thing for the department. And so to know that we're potentially talking about cutting it now immediately makes me go, well, if we're cutting it for F Y twenty-four, when or if, might we be able to bring that back? I also, knowing how well our department heads work together and their dedication to the town, I do worry a little bit, as Jake alluded to, that there was some overcutting, because I know everyone is trying their best to get us back right side. So I do worry a little bit about that, and I know, especially once it came out that the school didn't cut, I think what a lot of people expected. I just want to make sure that the department heads weren't going above and beyond to try and assist in making that gap even less.
I did mine before I even knew what the school was. I think I had mine submitted to Brian that weekend.
I think everybody's been aware and concerned that this is where we're gonna be this year. I think it's all been in the back of our minds, like we still approach it the same way, but.
And I would, I, I mean, I would resubmit it next budget, F Y twenty-five, I'll resub, I mean, I would love to resubmit it, I'll resubmit it every year, and if you tell me to cut it every year, I'll cut it every year, I have no problem with resubmitting, but. Uh, no, your points are valid and I think at least we all, if we do go that route and, and we do have to cut it and it does get cut, I think we all can at least say, if we find ourselves in these situations, you know, I mean.
So I'm gonna throw it out there, no, we're not, we're not finalized, but what if we split it in half and said, let's target, like, like half the wages and half the academy cost, or at least half the wages and the whole academy cost, however that mix might need to be, with the idea that if we can keep half of it in there, we can start it mid-year. It won't be in place for the whole year, but, you know, in the fall, we can start going through a process to select a candidate and then start it in, you know, in the beginning of calendar twenty-four. And then it's only fifty percent more of that cost in F Y twenty-five to continue it for the full year. Because we've already kind of, you know, incrementally bring it in, it just, just a thought, if we can afford it.
Yeah, I just want to follow up question, clarification, when you talk about, you know, the salary for the, for the six months of the academy, that's not embedded into that fifteen thousand, is it? That fifteen thousand is strictly the academy and all of the supplies needed to attend.
Correct, sir.
The salary is already, we're assuming, if it's not the cadet program, we're assuming that we've lost somebody and so the salary is already covered by a salary line item.
No. No.
Well. Or are you, are you saying, well, in theory, so we're not, we're not gonna pull somebody on, we're not gonna hire somebody unless we have a, a loss in staff.
Without the cadet program, like assume this is your budget.
Without the cadet program, we're not gonna go out and hire a seventh officer, we're going to have a void. Somebody leaves for whatever reason, therefore, you now have freed up salary line item for the rest of the fiscal year that they're gone. So you, when you hire somebody, you still have that line item to rehire them, rehire somebody new on that same salary line item. Unless they, you know, they come in higher, they come in lower, you're, you're talking a difference, but the idea that you, you have the capacity for six full-time officers in your budget currently today. You're not budgeting for six full-time officers currently?
My budget that I just resubmitted is budgeted for six.
Correct.
The budget that I had originally submitted was for seven. The, on the wage item, it was for seven, because potentially, we could have seven officers. If we lost an officer, we would still maintain our six, we would then begin the hiring process again for the, another cadet. So it was kind of like, six full-time staff was our minimum, was our max staffing with the cadet program, with the understanding that that cadet position could be moved to a full-time position.
So you have to, you have to fund it for the year as a, as an officer position.
So the. Can I interject to you, Mike? So, so Chief, I think what, what Scott's getting at is, assume you have no cadet program, so that's the forty-seven thousand in wages, roughly, right?
Three, seven, seven.
Forty-seven or thirty-seven?
Plus outfitting, plus outfitting.
No, no, hang on, thirty-seven or forty-seven? I see forty-seven in here, unless it has other stuff in there, which is.
Police wages is three, seven, seven.
They're just seeing the reductions in the requests.
Oh, I'm sorry, your reduction was forty-seven thousand-ish.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm tracking now.
Your reduction in wages was forty-seven with no cadet program.
Chad, come back up here. She laughed.
Run some numbers. I had to check out that.
Yes.
So, so forty-seven thousand reduction in wages plus a fifteen thousand reduction in academy is because of no cadet program.
Yes.
So I think what Scott's getting at is, if we had someone leave and you don't have a cadet program, you don't have an academy line.
Yes.
We would have the salary for whoever left for the balance of the year, but we don't have money to put them in the academy if needed.
Or get them equipment.
Or any of that, so we theoretically can get back to six, but we can't get them trained if they need it, we can't get them supplies if they need it.
Correct, yeah, we have the salary to bring them on.
If we take the fifteen out, then we, we're worse off if we lose somebody, we're not even prepared to replace them.
So.
Potentially, yes.
So my, my thought was as a compromise is if we, in the worst-case scenario, if we have a reduction enforced through attrition, somebody leaves, whatever, we have the funding capacity to at least outfit a new officer. Maybe not send them to the academy, but at least get them outfitted, so that way when we're putting it out for hiring somebody, we have the salary already embedded.
Yes.
If we can find somebody that comes in academy-trained or post, you know, trained, then there's no additional cost to send them, we just have the line item to make sure they have their ballistic vest and that they have their, the proper uniforms and we put them on the road.
Yes.
So at a minimum, I think if we don't zero that line item out, but leave enough to outfit a new officer, whether that's.
Wherever that goes in the line.
Four thousand, five thousand, I don't know what that line item needs to be in order to get the supply, should we lose somebody. I mean, let's face it, I know currently, and I wish I had some wood around here, knock, there you go, knock on some wood, we do see a lot of attrition through the police department, you know, we have over the decades. They come in, they stay three, five years, seven years, and then, you know, those dang M S P, you know, they, they have big budgets, they like to take a lot of our people. And, and other departments have much bigger budgets than we do. But currently, we have a pretty stable department, as far as. In theory.
We do, we'll just stay there.
Yeah, so I, you know, I just think, but having the capacity, should somebody leave, having the capacity to at least outfit a new officer that comes in academy-trained is important.
If you get somebody that's academy-trained.
Correct, if we, if we can't find somebody academy-trained, then we're at a, a budget deficit and we have to address that at that time. But you, you know, we've always said, oh, you know, it's so hard to find somebody and it, it really is, and the pool is getting smaller and smaller and just somehow you can fall uphill and you find, people come to you, you know. It, it has worked out over the years that the people that have come to Irving have come academy-trained.
Last two, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean. It's a gamble, if you, so the, the flip side of that is, we zero out and then we just don't hire anybody and we stay with five officers until the budget changes.
Yeah, no, we don't want to do that.
That's the flip side of it, you know.
What is the likelihood in this environment of getting an academy-trained officer? Ballpark at best.
Want to go to Vegas?
Flip a coin.
Should I jump in for a second on that question? I, I've sat on, in the last few years, I've sat on all the hiring committees for the police department and surprisingly enough, we've had more and more academy-trained officers apply for the Irving Police Department. Not all were hired, but, but the pool has. Not all were hired, but, but the pool has increased, I believe. Not to the point that, 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 um, well, I would say to the point that, that those officers that we chose, some of them were, were, um, weren't academy-trained, um, but we chose them because we thought they were the best candidates.
So I can go back to the last, I, I, I hear you, Bill, and, and, and I do believe that we have had academy-trained people apply. Just because you have the academy doesn't mean that.
Correct, correct.
You're hirable. We, we hired, since I've been here, as, as, as chief, acting chief, we've hired six, six or, six or seven. Two had the academy, and they were rare circumstances. One was coming from Greenfield, and one was coming from Amherst. Outside of that, we haven't hired anybody with the full-time academy that I can, that I can think of. Uh, Officer Moretti, we sent to the academy, he left to go to state police. Brandon Bryant, we are bridging him. Barber, we're bridging him. Amanda Flower, we sent her to the academy. We hired a few others that just didn't make it through FTO or panned out, but we would have had to send them to the academy.
Okay.
I think that, I think the, maybe the perspective that Scott and I have is that, you know, you can read it in the news, we're seeing officers get decertified. We know you can't go to part-time anymore, it's, it's full-time or it's nothing, so. And, you know, and the, and the political climate around law enforcement is not always very favorable. Fortunately, Green, uh, or, fortunately Irving's not like that. Um, but, so I just think that perspective, and we've only had candidates that we'd hire twice, that were, that were, you know, trained. I think that's our concern, but, uh, in terms of saying, like, the pool is smaller and smaller about those that we'd want to add, let's just say, you know, that, that are trained.
I'm just trying, I was just trying to indicate that, that it's, it's not true that there weren't academy-trained, other academy-trained officers in, in, uh, in the hiring process. They just weren't chosen as, as a candidate.
Okay.
There. Okay, did you?
A couple of things, uh, I'd like to make a suggestion, and I have a question from Dan Hammack. Um, you'd mentioned.
Dan, you've changed.
He's here. Um, you'd mentioned earlier about adding half of something back. Um, I'd suggest we go through everything and then prioritize and look at which ones are the higher priority to bring back and which ones aren't at this point. Just, just as a suggestion.
No, I just meant as like a footnote, I, I guess maybe I should have said that when we started going through this. Any that we have concerns about cutting, right? Let's talk through them, and if they're a question mark, then let's put them on the shortlist for review at the end, right, to come back to. That was my, kind of my point was like, I think maybe we should review trying to put back half, if, when we get there. Not saying to do it now or decide to, right now in this moment. So yes, I agree.
Okay, and Dan, uh, let's see. If there's an unanticipated need for an officer or reserve fund transfer might be a possibility?
Yeah, I thought, I thought of that too. I'll mention that when Scott comes back, but yeah, I, uh, I was thinking that too, although hate to rely on that, but yes. He's right.
Dan was first.
He's right. You're right, sir.
Throw it out there, that reserve fund, this is like the third time now, reserve fund has been brought up as, uh, it could be used for. And so there's only so much reserve fund to go around, so just putting that out there.
And it will get over-allocated seven times in the contingency for the tight budget, I can guarantee, and we hope we only need it once. Scott, uh, Dan just added the, you know, potential if we had attrition and then needed to send the academy, there is always the reserve fund if we hadn't expended it, which I thought of too, but. Deb cautioned that we're going to use it as our contingency for a bunch of things, and it's only so big, so. Anything else, I, I don't, anything else on specifically the cadet program, academy, police wages? Anything else in public safety?
To the cadet program and the academy, I, I know Chief has worked very hard to get the department built back up, and so I just want to make sure that we have adequate funding if an officer needs to be hired, that we have it in there for salary and academy. I, I don't want to see him scrambling or not being able to replace someone, and with that said, none of our officers are allowed to go anywhere.
Agreed. We have a great group, we really do. I mean, we always have, I always say that we always have a great group, we always seem to have a great group. And, and, and thankfully, we're, we're able to restore a great group, but I, I agree, I don't want to see any of, any of this staff go anywhere. It's a great fit, so. But I do appreciate all you guys' comments and, and concerns, and again, I was asked to cut, so I cut.
Thank you, sir.
Jen, you're up.
All right, we're, we'll come back to school. Education. Uh, Public Works.
Is Pete still here? Or is he just a figment? Did I not see him earlier this evening?
I believe he left.
He was, but it looks like he left.
Oh, okay. I did have a couple of questions for, um, both wastewater and water. The unforeseen overtime line, I know we can't really cut that a lot, but we did talk about at a prior meeting, that that's not truly unforeseen overtime, that's the, um, coming back on the weekends to do the testing. So to kind of give a, a more true number as to what the actual unforeseen overtime is, can we have those wages, the weekend wages pulled out and put into wages? Or into their own column?
So Pete and I wanted to ask you all if you want that broken out into, should back up a little bit. So the way that the overtime or the wages are broken out for the enterprise fund are different than how some of the other departments are typically laid out. I wasn't here for when that was created, so I don't know the rationale behind that. So do you want to see that broken out into each of those line items? Or, um, we've talked to other water districts on how they've structured it, and there's another category that they use to attribute to that time. Do you, so do you want to see it back in each of the individual employee line items, or do you want to see it in just something separate from the overtime line item?
I'd like it in something separate from the overtime, because I know, part of the reason I was hoping Pete was still floating around somewhere. Um, he had talked about the chance that there might be the opportunity to do away with some of that by doing some different reporting structure with DEP. And so I was wondering if we could get an update on where he was with that, and then I just thought, if that change was to go into effect, we'd have a more clear picture next year as to what that line was truly costing, yeah.
I will break that out differently then.
The other question I had for him is I noticed that the clothing allowance was increased, and I was just wondering, um, is that just because of a new addition, or if that's, I mean, it's only a thousand dollars, but at this point, it's a thousand dollars. Um, so does that increase have to stand? Um, and then two lines in the water enterprise was water testing and well and pump station. They were in, both increased, but it didn't look like we spent them out previously. So I was just curious, um, as an explanation for the increases.
So it was clothing allow, or?
Clothing allowance, if I'm not mistaken, we approved an increase from two fifty to five hundred on that, correct?
Uh, it looks like we did a thousand dollar increase.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Amount?
Right. Per person. We, we doubled it.
Likely the cost.
Is that why? Okay, okay.
Because the two fifty per person was set fifteen years ago.
Back when Carhartt's were fifteen bucks.
Over a decade ago.
When, when you could buy something for two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
But the other two were?
Water testing?
Water testing.
And well and pump station.
Okay.
Are you good on those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Similar to the water ones, the wastewater capital improvement, although I see, you know, a drop of ten thousand. I would like to understand more what, what that reduction's gonna do. Um, in terms of, you know, why, why are we reducing it, or why do we think we can? Maybe I missed an narrative, I didn't see it. And it is still not an operating, not necessarily an operating cost, if it was coming out of the enterprise, rather than out of RNA. And so I don't know.
It is because you self-fund out of reason appropriate.
So this is in the operating budget wastewater, not the, not any, it's not actually a capital.
Even though we call it.
It's a capital line, but it's an operating capital line.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, correct.
Sounds like another opportunity to change the title.
Which I believe when we had that conversation, there was sort of the, the general philosophical question if all of the capital improvements come through this, this process that we have with the capital plan committee, the review, it's like Board FinCom, goes to town meeting, becomes a special article, why there would be another avenue curved out. And so I think that was part of that, um, that realignment, to, to make sure that everything was following the existing process. But I can, I can get clarity on that.
Okay. That makes more sense in terms of impact, so that, that's helpful.
Correct.
Back to the, kind of the wage lines and stuff. I'm assuming we're not necessarily gonna make all those changes right now, because we were hoping to do that in new software for July one. But in general, is there a consensus that we should consolidate it like we do? There's normally department head, then there's staff wages. We potentially are gonna call out, um, required, I don't know, whatever that title would be that you found from other departments that they utilize for required weekend work, rather than overtime.
So now you're talking about chart of accounts approaches. Yes.
Just alignment and how we're looking at it, right?
So, so, yes.
And then overtime will truly be called, like, unexpected. It will truly be.
So typically, the way you're gonna see this, full-time wages, part-time wages, as two different breakouts, and then you're going to see overtime longevity, education incentive. Um, if there was a clothing allowance in your payroll versus, uh, uniform expense, the difference is there, right?
Okay.
Those are typically what you're going to see, shift differential, things like that are gonna be payroll line items, and they're gonna fit into that category.
Got it.
And so you could have more definition, but if we choose to have more definition, we should be consistent in every department. And I think the issue right now is a lack of consistency.
Yes.
One department's very detailed, another one is not.
Okay, I won't leave with that one tonight. Anything else in Public Works? The surveying services just seems large to me. Is that something we haven't been using, or we only utilized it in capital projects?
It was a new request because the three of you will recall, we keep using the consulting line item that exists in your budget to do all of this, and we were trying to give it to home.
Every time we need to fix a road layout or define it or survey it or.
Keeps coming out of your budget to do that. Um, so that was a, a new request. With that being said, Mariah's proposed budget has a, has a small line item that is also, that could be used for consulting and surveying. So I still think we still have capacity, even though we're proposing to make this reduction, and we could keep relying on the select board budget, um, for some of that.
Health and Human Services? Benefits will come back to you at the end. Um, Capital Plan?
Real quick, on Veteran Services, I was just noticing, we budget thirty thousand every year, but it seems like we don't spend more than five. And we're budgeting twenty thousand this year, is the ask? Is there?
So they recalculate our projected expenses for veterans' benefits each year.
Okay.
With the understanding that that can change, depending on who moves into your community or moves out, who accesses services, who does not. We're projected to have over eleven thousand dollars in expenses. We don't always expend it all, to your point. Um, so we've been keeping thirty thousand for years, just as, as the capacity has remained. It's been very consistent that we haven't spent over twenty, so I'm proposing that we go down to twenty this year, and that will still meet our obligations and give us a little capacity if things change from today's experience to next year when this budget's in place. So.
Okay.
It's the best estimation I have.
Culture and Recreation?
So I'll just throw in, the Finance Committee will cut twenty-two-five from their budget. Um, we have twenty-five put aside for Finance Committee expenses. We've never spent more than a hundred and fifty dollars.
You mean?
Two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We will keep it.
You have twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, I wish. Yeah, there goes your, you can have your reserve fund back. Um, so we're just gonna change that line item to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Anything else on Culture and Recreation? Um, Capital Planning? So I'm just gonna ask the question, maybe as something to come back to, I wasn't there, so apologies. Um, the eight thousand for a shared use path, if we have the free cash. I don't know that that's one that I would like to see dropped for that low amount, but I don't know, we can, just as a, maybe we come back to it if, if everybody's willing at the end, kind of see where we are.
My thought on a, a lot of those that are, we're cutting out of free cash, it doesn't alleviate my concern of future, uh, raise and appropriation deficits. So, you know, I look at those a little bit differently. If we have the free cash and we can expend it this year, we're not building our operating budget on free cash, nor should we. So, um, while I appreciate the cuts and it looks like, you know, well, you freed up, you know, sixteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars out of free cash, I would hate to see that roll into operating budget, because we have no idea, uh, what our free cash looks like year over year. And to start building operating budget out of free cash is not a smart idea, so.
So you're gonna keep both of those?
I, if they're, if they're, if they were tentatively in there as part of our free cash expenditure, which I believe they were.
Yeah.
Cause I think the only raise in appropriation was the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Everything else in our capital, uh, was free cash. I don't want to move that money, if we're gonna, if we're gonna cut, it's to offset for an addition or a different free cash expenditure that's non-operating budget. Uh, I would not vote for any budget that is embedding free cash to augment our operating budget. I wouldn't put that to the town floor. It's not a smart idea, it's not the right way to do it. Given the fact that our, we're hitting our ceiling, our, and we're making the deep cuts, the availability of future free cash is going to be smaller. In theory, it, it should be. If we're making all these cuts now and really honing in what we're budgeting, the availability of free cash is gonna be much smaller than we've seen over the last couple of years. So.
And if it's not, then our budgeting is not, we're not doing as budgeting as well as we think we are.
Correct.
Like, if next year, if it's, yeah, as, as high as historically, not this year, but historically, then I think we're missing something.
Correct.
We shouldn't analyze that. Um, OPEB. So Jen provided us the feedback on the different options, hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred, and what the fully funded timeline potentially is. Because that was on the table, that's in the RNA, other special articles, and while it's been nice, I think it sounded like there was some consensus that that's not necessarily something we'd feel horrible about reducing on a permanent basis.
I, I looked at the, the documents that were sent, and it looks like if we, if we continue at three hundred thousand, it's estimated that we would be fully funded in, uh, twenty thirty-two. And if we drop it to a hundred thousand, uh, it pushes it out to twenty thirty-nine, if I'm remembering correctly. The additional seven years, I mean, we are far exceeding what any municipality looks at to be, become, you know, fully funded. So the additional seven years, uh, and dropping that down to a hundred thousand, I'd be in favor of it. To me, it's not a cut that really affects the town. It doesn't affect the OPEB viability to the extent that it's a detriment.
Right. And there's no, I, I don't see it as there's much of a penalty. There's potential lost gains, but the future value of money is down, so it's not gonna.
Right.
You know, that, I don't know. You know, that, I don't know. Offset model, but it just doesn't feel like, it's not a liability that we are like behind on or have any risk, risk behind, you know?
I think conversely, we're way ahead of.
Yeah. Yeah. I wouldn't want to see a comparison. There's some charts where we're top five and we want to be, and there's some where we're top five and we don't want to be.
Yeah.
This ones were probably top five and it's nice to be, so.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't have a problem with.
Five, 10, 100, I don't know, but, but it's good.
I, I agree. I, I think the 100,000 is reasonable and considering that it's the market that, that truly has affected the length of the OPEB. Sometimes it's good to drop back and stand on the sideline and watch. It's cyclical anyways, and it will change, so.
I was going to say.
2039 could be 2033.
Correct. You, you know, three years, five years from now, you could see the market shift in, in a way where all of a sudden, you know, the accountant saying, and the treasurer saying, oh, updated numbers, we're going to hit it in three more years. You never know.
Right. Right. Yeah. And fully funded and a couple of bad years, and we need to put some more in.
Correct.
And a couple of good years, and you're good for a long time, you know, it's just back and forth.
It's a fluid target, and it's ever going, it's going to change every, every year.
Any concerns with that?
Nope.
Okay. So that's, I'm sorry?
I'm altering it to be.
100,000? You don't have any concerns, do you?
No, no.
Okay.
We'll be able to, do my book come in or not?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to come up or no? We'll, we'll be able to draw off 75,000 once we're fully funded. Basically, our, our service cost is 200 and.
Please come up.
Yeah.
I'm not following, and I have a feeling we're going to have questions.
While she's pulling, while she's pulling that out, just a question for you. That change from 300 to 100 is not shown in this tally sheet, correct?
I didn't know what you all would pick.
Correct. So, so that is a, a reduction.
Correct.
Of effective $200,000.
Correct.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure I was correct in my assumption.
Yeah. So once, once we are fully funded, we, the service cost is $212,000, but we can draw $289,000 off. So basically, we have a net of $75,000 per year.
So you're saying it's going to be an income source at some point?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard, but I'm like, are you really telling?
That's the whole point of this.
So we're going to get a return on this investment someday instead of a cost.
There is an ROI.
That was the goal.
Okay. All right. I saw the numbers going the other way, but I was like, there's no way we get that money back. All right. I'll take.
You do.
I'll take investment revenue. I'm going to spend this line putting money in. Might as well get something out of it for, for the town as well.
And that's all projections based on.
Projections, yes, again, once you're fully funded.
On market viability. So.
Correct. Yep. They could tweak a little bit.
Yep. Going to that point. We could get fully funded. It could drop. We could choose not to fund it, go back up. And so we're doing this back and forth where we're have a little income theoretically, or we have a little due and.
Yeah, one way or the other.
Just oscillate there for a long time, hopefully. It's the best place to be, probably.
Yes.
Other.
Just wanted to throw that tidbit of information out to you.
No, it's good to know. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I guess any other budget items that we didn't discuss that you wanted to talk through before we kind of go back to the recap and where does that put us and then what, what's our action from here? Okay. So I think back to the recap sheet now, or to the recap sheet now as the focus. I lost my recap sheet. We'll come back eventually here. So looking down. And Brian, just a question. Why is there a, green is the ones that you modified since our last discussion?
Correct.
Did we discuss the modification to the last year's wastewater? Or is that just green by mistake?
That's actually benefits and that's just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
You can disregard that.
Okay. I'll disregard that.
The, the red was just called out in the proposed FY24 as a question mark. So green has all been updated, but the 150 is a question.
But everything in that column is in the total 14, 1, et cetera, et cetera, down through. Everything's totaled there.
Everything that you all reviewed today in the summary, in the proposed reductions is reflected in that column, except for what you just changed. That's a $200,000 further reduction.
And the 150 for stabilization RNA is in that too. It's in the 14, 1. It's in the totals.
Correct.
Even though it's red, it's in them.
Correct. I was just trying to bring your attention to it.
It's fine. Yep.
But the capital increase is not in this.
Correct.
I have not moved sources of, of where things are being funded yet, but I can make that change too.
RNA, the finance committee's request that the RNA line item be stable at 400,000.
That's what he said. That's what he meant.
That's what I meant. I have not made that alteration because that was a request from capital, but you all had not given me the instruction to do that.
Okay.
So I noted that in your memo as a request, and if you tell me to do that, I will do that next.
Well, in terms of shifts, if we do the 200, right, now we're down at what, 13, 9, 34, something like that. Which puts us, you know, net positive, say 43, you know, 400 and, I'm sorry, 43,000, something like that. The remaining issues, I think in terms of a continuity, right, is that we don't have, that doesn't give us future capital potential because we only have 125 built in for capital in terms of an operating expense and recurring. So moving that to 400 or more instead of 125 from RNA, although we'll still be plus 43 in the, in the total, we will be short. Because we will be leaving that free cash behind, like, or not behind, but we'll be putting that free cash aside and saying that's not part of balancing the budget. Right? Because we can't operate with that.
Can I just ask one clarification that I failed to ask capital? The $400,000 that you want at least targeted or reserved in the reason appropriation capacity, is that inclusive of the annual appropriation into stabilization for capital?
I would say no.
Um, if it's not, wouldn't it be like 525? I'd like the 525, but I think we, we, I mean, we've got to give two. I mean, 400, I think, is, is the minimum that needs to be in there. I don't know. What, what does the rest of the group think about it?
Well, we could talk six, and we cut it down to four.
Then we cut it down to four. But is the four total or the four, four plus the 125 that was already there? I was under the impression it was four total.
No, that's what I was thinking.
I, I was seeing the opposite. I thought it was four plus the 125 because we usually do, if you look at all sources of capital, when you start counting things like some of the wastewater accounts and things like that, that we do for capital, I think it's between, it's upwards of almost a million dollars that we do in capital every year. I thought it was four plus the appropriation, so 550. Then my concern would be, I, I can't remember the last time where we, where we did $400,000 of capital projects just from RNA. It's always been more than that.
But we would go in next year with the knowledge that that's all we had.
Right.
So I'm just going to, okay.
And you can only, you can only do, the bucket's only so big, right?
I, I didn't get it completed, and I don't think I have the notes with me that I have a scratch pad. I was going back five years, five fiscal years on what we have put into stabilization and spent on capital in total in the fiscal year every year. I need to see them again, but I think they're well over a million dollars every single year. So if we're going down to 400, and I think RNA is well above six even. So if we're, we may be cutting a lot further down in the RNA and the continual ability than we think. I'm not, I, I will, I will have it together before our next meeting in two weeks just to, just to see that because I really want to understand it better. Because if we're changing from a million dollars in RNA for capital and savings and going to 400, that's a lot different than if we're doing six to four, and the rest of it was always free cash, and we were fortunate to have it, right? That, that, that model change is very significantly different, so.
It may be just me, but you know, going from a million and 600,000, dropping it to 400 may be the direction that we want to go in as opposed to letting it go in the other direction because it's risen fast and stayed up there high for years. Perhaps we need to tighten things up a little bit.
It's not just you. Okay. So I, I was going to say, while historically we spend a million dollars, we also, you know, we do capital replacement of, of items far faster than any other community. I mean, you know, and, and I think we have to, given the, the financial climate that we talk about going on right now, looking at our practices on capital expenditures and honing those in a little bit better, maybe the, and I know you talked about this Deb, that it was brought up at one of your capital planning committee meetings that, you know, like the useful life of items that we replace, while it's nice to replace it after seven years, it might actually be a 12-year item, you know? And so we've had the luxury because we can RNA about a million dollars a year and then offset whatever we don't RNA with free cash. That practice may not be able to, it's not sustainable. Not may not, it's not sustainable. If you're talking about, you know, bringing that back up to, to be able to buy all the goods that we want, and in order to do that, we're cutting operating budgets in order to offset that. To me, while I want to be able to keep the stabilization of capital expenditures there, and I agree, if you zero that out, we're going to be in a world of hurt in three to five years. I, I'm not sure going above the 400 total, inclusive of the 125 that's in there, is prudish.
Fiscally responsible.
Yeah. I don't think it falls under fiscally responsible. I would agree with you. I think maybe we need to take that hard look at, you know, expenditures of, on capital. Need to hone that in a little bit better. It's, it's been nice to be able to do the things we do. I know there are people that have felt the burden of not being able to get some. One of them's sitting back there right now that Chief has, you know, he looks for a fire truck and we tell him for six years in a row, or however many years it's been, we'll get you next year. So, and, and yet we're able to function. And there, there is a tipping point where all of a sudden the safety mechanisms or the cost of repairs outweighs purchasing something new, and then we have to talk about that. But you know, I've got another chief back here. It's, it's great to have a new cruiser. There are some times when maybe we can stretch that out instead of being a four to five year or a six year, maybe it's a seven year. If it becomes unsafe, then we have to escalate that, you know, sooner. But I would say cap it at 400 and see where we're at, and that's inclusive of the 125.
So I'm on a roll tonight, so I'm just going to come out with it. I think that is a great plan, and I, I think that it, that, I have no problem with that at all. I think my concern is Irving has a mentality that because we're Irving, we can. And so I think we're going to need to get every single department head on board with this because things are oftentimes approved because we have, quite frankly, the luxury of having that funding. So saying no is not something that happens frequently. When a department head needs something, they come forth, they put together, much to their credit, a very thorough explanation and plan of why they need it. But, but rarely is something said no to. And so we have created an atmosphere where that is the norm. And so I would ask from the board of selectmen and, and the other offices, and understanding that this budget season has taught us what we're doing is potentially not sustainable. And so a, a shift across everywhere needs to happen. Not just specific departments, but across all, the, the whole town, the town, you know, as a whole. And I, I think having the support of the board and getting those department heads to understand that from the capital side, no is going to become a word we're going to be using a lot would really be helpful because frankly, it's not a word that's said a lot in this community when it comes to purchases or buying or, or any of that kind of thing.
I can see this as a, like, if you're looking at it as a project management kind of question, you get all the departments together, you get all of their priorities together, and everyone decides what's the most, the highest priority. And you get that, and you keep going down the list until you got no more money. It's simple, simplistic, but it's, everybody has to buy in. So maybe that's the last meeting that we have, Brian, is we all, we get everything, we verify it, you know, this is important, this is your number one. And then everybody gets together, including our group, capital planning group, and we all go, all right, these are, we've got $950,000 worth of stuff here. We have $400,000. Where do we go from here? Give everybody buy-in. Yeah.
I agree. I, I think capital, your job is to, to, to hear the, the, the want from, from the departments and your, our first line of defense and saying, and the finance committee of saying no. And that's, that's what, what your function and your job, jobs and duties are to do. And clearly, the select board is here to support and to, and to back you up.
I see and probably generally agree with that perspective from one view, but I just want to caution that we don't miss the fact that if we defer too much, then deferred maintenance is a lot more expensive than doing it when you should have, I guess I'll say.
It is.
I don't disagree that we should, I think it's been brought up in capital a lot of times, come up with better policies and standards on when and how. For example, vehicles, I just know it's come up, you know, what is our policy or how do we arrive at when a vehicle is replaced? Rather than what it is now, which is varied. I won't say it's arbitrary. There's often reasons brought, but it's not standard. It's not standardized. So I agree on that perspective, but just want to caution that we do that long enough and we'll just have larger costs that we don't know how we're going to ever, you know, work through. And I think it's the same thing that got brought up about school. Like, it's been a luxury that everything was just funded, right? Instead of some fundraising or out-of-pocket norms that are, as are common everywhere else. Our trash is realistically still free, you know, all the different things that we have here, which we all appreciate. Don't get me wrong. I do. But I think we need to find a balance. I just, just caution to not go too far because that will, will put us in positions where our neighbors are, which is not, we want, we see that and we don't want to be there, right? We go, oh, I wish, I'm glad I don't have to make those decisions, right? And so we're in that place, and it's very foreign this year, I think, for all of us, right? I remember one year in whatever the ten or so I've been involved in one of these roles that we've even pushed back on anything, and it was just mostly a reduction in capital because of an unexpected large cost. We don't normally have to do this, so I don't think changing that culture, to your point, is a negative. I think it is an opportunity just to, a little bit of a, maybe a wake-up call, if you will, for ever, all of us, right, who are, who are running the government here and doing this, that it isn't a, and, and a bottomless wow. And so let's think about it like that now before it's even worse. But let's not go overboard either.
I mean, just because this year's looking like a 400,000 year doesn't necessarily mean that next year, we can't say that 400,000 was not enough. It has to be 450, and we can go forward with 450 or 500, but you know, it's, it's looking like a 400 year this year.
Right. But my, I guess my concern is the same as we've talked about a bunch of these budgets. We can't defer all of those operating numbers a year and then expect we can absorb them next year, no problem, because we couldn't this year. So if we bring it down to four, we might not be able to bring it up to 450. We may not have a capacity to do more than 425. We may not have a capacity to do more than 425 because of the other costs that go up. Because we'll still have that ceiling of two and a half from an operational, you know, sustainability. So I just, I just want to be cognizant of that because we're setting potentially a ceiling, not a floor.
Mm-hmm.
That we don't set that too low, we've never had to have it.
Right.
And the potential that the, the free cash that we'd like to supplement that with and do many more things than we might even think are essential, may not be there either, so, you know, potentially have that tightened twice over, so.
The bucket's only so deep. It's, it's a limiting part of the equation.
Well, it is, but wherever we set it now is where we are.
Yeah.
And it's not necessarily going to significantly change in any way.
Right.
Forward. And I just say that because if we get to that point, there's some number at the end of the day, I'll just say it, we're gonna probably sit here and say, well, we think the school needs, budget needs to go down by this much to balance to an operationally sustainable number for the overall budget. If we set that too low, that's gonna be this but harder because the delta's getting smaller and smaller every year, you know, so.
If that's the whole thing with budgeting, the numbers, the numbers are fungible. If they're not the same numbers they were last year, they're not gonna be the same numbers they are next year.
That's right. No, but we know exactly how much they'll change, roughly. I mean, within, within some precision.
Did we this year?
No, no, I mean in capacity, not in cost. And we wouldn't have the capacity for an energy increase of 50% again next year, right? I mean, that would pretty much effectively, most likely, just take up our entire levy increase year over year. Then what?
Yeah, but things.
Your wages come out of your.
Things happen, though.
Yeah, well, of course, but, that's all. So, did we come around to most likely 400 is the number? And is that inclusive of 150 or not 150 for stabilization? Or any stabilization? I guess we don't even need to define as capital. There is no stabilization in this model either, if, if that's not there, so. There's a capital of 150 and a 400, proposed RNA for.
For capital.
For capital, they're both capital.
Right.
But if, but if the proposal that I just heard was it's 400 inclusive, there's just 400 in capital RNA and that's it, no stabilization of any sort, then, I'm hearing both versions, I don't know which one we're deciding on, but then that would be it.
Oh, see, so I was looking at it differently. I was looking at a 400 on the RNA so you can maintain the capacity to raise in appropriate in future years. So the 125, increasing that to 400 and seeing what that does when it's all said and done. The 150 is free cash for stabilization, right?
No.
Oh, that's RNA, I'm sorry.
That's RNA, that's why I'm asking that. Because if it was free cash, I, we hope we have the free cash, but for the things we feel we need every year to continue operating the town effectively at the service level we want, the RNA item's gotta add up to the RNA we can, we can have.
What's currently in the balance of capital stabilization?
I shouldn't have that ready for you.
I think it's over 700,000.
It is over 700,000.
And it probably bears calling out, I don't think we talked about it earlier. This does include a reduction in half of the overlay, too, from 200 to 100.
Correct.
It's already incorporated in the total, new totals.
I think just to crunch the numbers, I would like to see what the 400 for capital improvements RNA, increasing it from 125 to 400, and working through the reduction of the expenditures by the 200,000, I would propose that we increase the, or undo the full line item cut that the Chief had put forward for Academy and bring in a sufficient amount to outfit a new officer. We didn't talk about that one. I would assume that'd be around $7,500, should, maybe a little bit less, I'm not sure. 5,000, I don't know. For a ballistic vest, they're usually run upwards of 1,000.
Two, yeah. The ballistic vest and then the carrier and everything, you're up around 2,000.
About 2,000.
A thousand dollars, I'm sorry, a thousand dollars. I budgeted 2,000, in the budget that I presented, there was 2,000 because there's two of us that need replacement, so 1,000 each.
Right. No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about a new officer, so.
Yeah, so a thousand dollars.
Under Academy, you know, you, that line item was not only send somebody to the Academy, but to outfit them as well.
Yeah.
And get them, you know, up and running. So, you know, what, what would that look like if you're not sending them to the Academy, you're just outfitting somebody?
Just outfitting them? Quick numbers with a vest. 45, 5, 5,000-ish, give or take.
So adding, instead of zeroing out to 15,000.
Can we start from the top because I didn't follow all that, I don't know if everybody else did? Sorry, I hope you had notes.
I do. What do you want to know?
So you said capital, you were saying move capital RNA to 400.
Yeah.
So reduce the free cash one accordingly, no problem. And then, we're going to do what with capital stabilization RNA?
Leave it as is.
Leave it as is. And then.
Add in, or, change the reduction from 15,000 out of the Police Academy line item, and it's only gonna, it's gonna leave a balance of 5,000. So, it'll still be a $10,000 reduction, it just won't be a $15,000 reduction, and that would allow you to out.
15, 3 is, is the exact number, Scott, just so you know.
Thank you.
So reduce that down to five, or I'm just, I'm gonna give it down here.
Correct.
Well, it's a proposal, I, I wouldn't make any changes yet.
Yeah, this is just a proposal, just so we can actually crunch some numbers and see where we stand with that, and we may have to modify this two or three times before we we get there.
Well, we have a bunch of stuff, too, we haven't even touched on, that's not even in any of these numbers. Like, we have no funding set aside for staff wage increases.
Correct.
I don't think we have debt service set aside if we want to do the bridge, am I wrong in that, or correct in that?
There's not a new debt service for the bridge.
Correct.
The bridge.
So, part of what I was, so additional proposals that I was looking at are removing the $150,000 out of free cash on the hold for the school. We've talked about it, I talked about it very, it was the very first item I talked about. It's, I think the school has, the, the principal has maintained her ability to, or believe she can get within the FY23 budget based on the additional appropriation the town has put forward on the SDM. So I think removing that out of the free cash hold of 150,000. And then ultimately, looking at a number, if we're asking the school to look for a reduction addition to what they've already put forward, and not knowing what that would be yet.
And the things, I think, like Deb mentioned, that we haven't incorporated into RNA need, salary increases, salary wage increases. A conversation about what are we doing about Church Street Bridge? And if we are going to move forward with the borrowing, then a debt service, which is significant, probably, impact. From my recollections of what we had for numbers when we talked about Arch Street for Sewer Main, which was one and a half, 1.6, and the bridge is two, 1.8.
1.6.
1.6, so it's similar, but those were six figures.
Annually.
Annually.
Well, the current schedule that we have balloons. So right now, only five figures. At some point, they do escalate, they, I think it's after year eight, they do go into the six figures for the annual budget that you need for the debt service. So the payments are of.
Based on the, the borrowings that we looked at back then?
Correct. I'm, I'm just telling what we're currently having in place. I'm not saying you have to follow a schedule like that, I'm just telling you what we currently put into place for Arch Street Sewer, as your example. It starts at smaller amounts and after year eight, it balloons into larger payments.
Gotcha. Because we thought we would have the money to pay it off that.
And you remember that conversation?
That was the other projection, that we'd be paying it off in seven, we hoped.
Correct.
Correct. We, we shouldn't forget about our escalating costs because we thought we were in a better position. It's a seven-year-out problem, but still.
Correct.
So, so anyway, okay, it's five.
But it's not currently in the budget.
Yeah. If we choose to use the same model.
I don't have the market value currently on the fund, but as of June 30, you had $766,000 and change in the capital stabilization fund, and then you had a few expenses at the September 8 SDM, so that leaves you with a balance of 704,000, plus or minus for market
What else are we forgetting that we haven't even incorporated yet, anything else?
The only thing I can recall is the Historic Commission project, that grant match for the historic inventory. It's the only other one that I can think of, but we could potentially source that.
Is that a capital request? Or is that a budget request?
That was.
Well, it kind of fell in between. I think we ended with it would fill a capital like the other requests for a grant, and so.
So it's not in the mix?
It's not currently in the mix, but that would likely be a free cash sourced item. It's a one, it's a one-time investment.
I'm going to admit, I think that has fallen off the radar. I think it has gotten lost in the shuffle of late requests.
So I think conservatively, if we're looking at putting placeholders for the items that we don't know, such as wages and debt service, I think wages, realistically, you're looking at about 50,000. At least to start that conversation about where we go from there. And debt service, if you're not anticipating 100,000, I don't think you're anticipating enough.
I'm with you. I'm with you, it had to start at 100. It could go up from there, but it's gotta start from 100.
Yeah. I don't think you're gonna find a, a, you know, a debt service that we're gonna be able to get that bridge in there for under 100. We may be able to offset some of the costs with stabilization to meet that benchmark of 100, you know, so we're not borrowing the entire amount, but I think earmarking 100 makes sense, you know? And we also have other, you know, discussions about other projects that we have ongoing. Those will be a whole different conversation if we're not talking about those as RNA, like IP Mill and Swamp Road Bridge.
Well, and it's March right now, so is there anything else that's in the works that was being hoped that would be completed by the end of the fiscal year, but because of the, you know, just the length of time and things like that, will they truly be completed or will we need funding for them? So I guess anything like a rollover type of project where the hope was to get it done, but just because of circumstances that may not be completed, so kind of an in-progress plot.
You're talking about something that's not a special article?
Yeah, like.
No, I think anything that I can think of that falls into that category right now is slated to be funded by a special article, so that would, that would allow you to go past June 30. I'll, I'll revisit and look at all the list, listed items again.
IT.
Taking one for the EDR solution.
Mm-hmm. For the insurance requirement?
Oh, yeah.
Correct.
That's all the licensing.
For July 1.
Yeah.
Primarily, the recurring, the operating expenses licensing, yeah.
But I'd like to see what we can source out of the network project.
That's fine for this year, that's not fine for FY24.
Agreed, it gets us up and running.
That gets us to June 30.
But we still have.
I'm talking about operating expense in FY24, we don't have a number in there. The IT budget, I have to go back and look and talk with Jackie, I think it was proposed incorporating the increases in licensing costs so far, but it does not include the additional costs in moving to this.
And I, did you ballpark that, like 20 to 25,000 annually?
That's what I, yeah.
And I know, I'm not gonna, you know, obviously, you threw that off the top of your head just based on the type of license and the number of licenses going forward.
I, I am hopeful, worst case is like 30, hopefully we can do it for 10 or 15, but.
So that's not earmarked for FY24?
No. And I just need to confirm that the rest of our licensing changes in FY23 are in the IT budget for '24 that we did mid-year.
Okay.
Already, because that 30 assumes that the mid-year changes are already in the budget. If it's not, you're getting closer to 50.
Well, the unknown column.
Yeah, I just, I, I, yeah, I know I said I'd have a better number, I've been trying to get it lower and lower, we're not there yet for, for tonight, but it is a missing number. I think 30 is a reasonable placeholder for the moment.
Oh, there's another $200,000 in costs we need.
Who's been doing a tally?
I've been kind of doing some tallies. I don't know if it's everything we talked about here, but.
Frank, is there, oh, sorry, I was just gonna ask, is there any chance to have this updated on the fly and reprinted?
This exact moment?
No.
Okay, okay.
No is the appropriate answer on that one.
Can we get a screenshot of that expression?
Can I do that for you tomorrow? I would be glad.
Thank you.
But you do have a, a running.
Yes, I've been taking notes as you all have been talking. I will verify that I captured everything and, and then I will give you another budget scenario that tries to incorporate all of these changes that we discussed tonight.
What I did capture, if you want to hear it.
Yeah.
Is, just in terms of looking at this and, and just going down the large numbers, right, we, we took 200 out of other RNA, right, other special articles, because that was our OPEB change.
Yeah.
We shifted and increased RNA by 375, reducing free cash and capital by the same amount to get our capital RNA to 400.
375?
Yeah, I put 375 because I thought it needed to be 500 and forgot to adjust that. Thank you. Let me update that, sorry. Those are my notes and I didn't update them because I thought, wasn't thinking.
So the net effect of that.
The net effect of that is a 75.
Well.
The, the net effect of those changes is, to the, to the negative 157 at the bottom is plus 200. We shifted from free cash to RNA and capital, it doesn't change the negative 157. We took 200 out of RNA for OPEB reduction, that comes out of the 157 negative at the bottom, so we're plus 43.
Right.
Right? If we add five for PD, we're down at 38. I won't even get into the others yet. If we, well, yeah, because I just want to jump to one thing. If I take what that leaves for free cash expenses, just to, how much of the free cash and how much the rest is RNA, because it's not called out separately here, right? In terms of balancing our operating costs. If we took out how much free cash we had and everything we're spending on free cash, it should equal zero or we haven't balanced our RNA. So, 311 for the SDM, leaving the 150 for EES in there just to use the free cash up in terms of the, the math. 273 for the library, 291 for capital, because that's the new free cash amount. That's 1,025. Our free cash number was 1,325 effectively, so we are still 300 overspent. 300 less 38 overspent in our RNA to balance it on RNA. Without salary, without, you know, salary and wage adjustments, without debt service, And that might have been convoluted to follow, but I think it's right. Thanks, Frank. Especially at nine.
Yes.
Whoa, 9:26, wow. When did we pass nine o'clock? I, I guess, maybe to summarize what I, what I was getting at by saying all that is. we are still 350,000 off of what I generally am hearing we think is a balanced, raised and appropriate operating expense budget without a debt service for a bridge. If my on-the-fly math is right and I, you know, we'll see.
And you say that with including wages?
Including wages and IT, including the five for the PD.
Okay.
I see that as we are 300, 290, 340. It's about 340, you know, it's just about 350. Still short. Is it balanced if we use all the free cash? Sure, but that's not sustainably balanced. If we drop the capital stabilization RNA at 150, we're down to 200. But feeling pretty late to me.
Those were a whole lot of numbers getting thrown around, so that doesn't leave any type of free cash in case of emergencies. We would have no cushion.
If we used it to balance the budget this year, or assuming we fix the, the gap in RNA?
Right. So what he's proposing is we pull it out of the capital. So all the numbers he was talking about pulling out would leave capacity.
Okay.
In free cash.
Correct. It would leave 300.
300, okay.
In free cash and not utilizing that to balance the budget.
Correct. It'd actually leave 450 if you're saying we don't need the 150 for the school. In free cash. But it is not a balance, but it's 350,000 short on a balanced, raised and appropriate budget, operating budget. If you heard something wrong in that math, please, but it's real quick, I know, it's like.
So would it be helpful when I update the budget summary sheet, I can sort it by funding source?
Maybe just two columns, right? What's free cash and what's not?
Just what's easier to follow? There's a lot of math going back and forth?
Yep.
Okay.
Having it embedded in there is difficult to make. I want to ensure that we're balancing it on RNA.
Yep.
And if we can do the same for the prior year, so we can compare them.
Well, now that.
It's there. I'll help you.
Difficult, isn't it?
Of course, I can.
Always difficult. I guess that leaves me, no matter what we do with IP Mill, no matter what we do with Church Street Bridge, Swamp Road Bridge, but that's not, that's a year or two out on, on a decision point probably. I don't see how we move forward without at least 200, if not 350,000 reduction in the school to get to something sustainable. And I think without redoing these numbers right now and having them 100%, because I'm just doing it quickly on the fly and I might have them wrong a little bit. My gut feeling says 200 is not enough. Maybe it doesn't need to be 350, but I don't think 200 is enough. It doesn't, huh, it doesn't include the $25,000 reduction in the assessment, the assessor's revaluation that shouldn't be a permanent reduction in operating costs. So maybe that's 375 now.
And you'll be able to, when you redo that face sheet with all the different tallies, you'll be able to parse that out, that 25, putting it back in as a request and showing that as being returned to free cash if we were to pull it.
So you want to put it back in?
Well, I just.
Regardless of the assessors offering it up this one year, you would like me to put it back?
Because it's offering it up and not on an RNA and it's offering it up as a, a one-time revenue source and utilizing it as what we know to be a recurring cost, it doesn't make sense. It's no different than free cash.
So you're suggesting it goes back in other special articles as is of the 25 RNA. We may utilize the offered 25 transfers for something else that's not a recurring cost for the fiscal year. So we might move it into capital or a capital project or something instead of letting it roll to free cash, but it should be an operating expense.
Yeah, I mean, if we were anticipating it for FY '25 and beyond, it doesn't make sense to do a one-time expenditure. It's no different than free cash. It's just not a recurring revenue source.
Right. It's effectively using free cash early.
Yeah.
It's really all we're doing. We're using next year's free cash now.
Correct.
If we move it over, that's all.
That is correct.
So I think maybe what you're getting at, so if we're going to end up with two columns, right, we're going to have the free cash amount of revenue and, you know, if you will, and then the expenditures from it. And then we're going to have the rest of our raised and appropriate and receipts revenue and the items coming out of it. At the bottom of those, anything left that we have here should go maybe in an additional line. So there's a one more row at the bottom that's the sum of, you know, PD, you know, officers, you know, equipment, wages, IT, whatever other ones that we said have to come out of RNA, but we don't have them in there yet. Just the sum of those and maybe the line item just says what those are.
You want a placeholder for now. Don't restore them back into the line items.
I think they should be in a placeholder with like kind of a description of what they all are.
So we can discuss them.
So we know.
Okay.
Because that number, that column down to zero is what we're trying to get to. And I think it's negative 375.
Okay. On RNA.
On RNA. If we go down the RNA column and put those in the RNA list, I think we're close to 400. Still short. On balancing what should come out of RNA in our opinions.
So then is it time to start looking at services that we could, we would be thinking of cutting? I mean, if we're asking the school to cut, what was your number? 250? Was that your number? I don't want to.
The gap is 375.
Okay.
If we want to reduce further the stabilization slash capital recurring amount, then that could go down, but right now I think that's it. I don't know where else it would come from. To your point, is there other places? I mean, throw them out.
I guess I'm just wondering, like, um, I know under solid waste, there were some line items that had to do with like recycling and it was, um, I can't think what they are off the top of my head. And I'm just wondering if we're not, if we're no longer accepting those at the highway department, are those items that could be cut and?
No, that line item is, is curbside recycling. So that's a market item and in the years that you haven't seen it expended, it's because the value, the market value of tin, plastic, paper, cardboard had a value where we actually received a proceed or a net zero.
Okay.
And then this year we were experiencing where the market actually had a greater cost than our revenue. And so we were actually paying out for those. So it's very much in flux with what the, the global market's doing for those materials.
And trash is really closer to like 130, because it's called out in two separate spots. It's like the trash and then it's trash disposal.
So your, your, your collection contract is one line item to itself.
Okay.
And then you have a separate disposal per ton.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
I think that's been a lot for all of us tonight. We're not waiting, I don't think for two, we'll meet in two weeks.
I was going to ask, is that waiting two weeks, is that enough? What does that put us as far as if we don't have this resolved? You know?
What's our drop dead date?
Yeah. What's the drop dead date?
We don't have to wait.
Regarding what?
To make sure that we have a balanced budget to create the ATM.
Oh. I have to post a warrant seven days before town meeting, so.
Okay, in the mailbox at home?
Oh, well, that's a whole different question.
Right. I don't want to, I don't want to get rid of that practice.
I would like you all to be done.
Right. I mean, we try to deliver it two weeks early.
Correct.
If you could all.
If it's a week early, I mean, maybe that's what it is, but like we can't push too far.
If you could finalize everything the week of April 10th, that would allow us to finalize everything for production, get things printed and strive to get it to people's homes by the last week of April. And then that would give the voters at least two weeks with their materials.
So my question is if we did, if, given that deadline of April 10th, that's two meetings, 27th and the 10th.
Maybe the third.
I was going to say, we might have to add another one in there.
We are meeting and it's probably hours next week for primarily executive session items. So I just don't know that we have capacity to add this on for Monday. And the school will not have met yet because they're meeting on Tuesday, right?
Tuesday, 21st.
So I don't know, other than we can get, we can get the data before then. But hopefully by the 27th, we have something further from the school. We have wage recommendations, study data to review and look at. And we'll have an IT number. And we can firm up a few of those still open items and take another pass at. Where is that put us and how comfortable are we with it? And two more meetings to hash out whatever else we need to to get there.
I think it sounds good. I would just like to see all of us come to a consensus tonight on a number for the school because that definitely seemed to be a problem that they did not have one. So I think we need to give them a very firm direction that this is the number.
I mean, I'll throw one out if everybody wants me to start, but I, you guys go ahead. I, I mean, I've been speaking plenty, so. I, I will if you want me to, but if you. My thought is every time we take another pass at it, we're adding another 10, 20, 30,000 we forgot about of something else that hasn't been added in yet. So for argument's sake, I'll say we're 400 off, I think is fair. We have 150 in the stabilization savings that maybe is negotiable. That brings us down to 250. Maybe 200. To me, it's 300. Puts us in a place to plus or minus tweak a little further in the rest of the costs. You know, it's it's a lot, but that the increase currently is was it 520-something thousand, I think? 530,000?
Approximately 9.5%.
Yeah, I got 9.7 on mine. I like it. Now, but, but just, you know, the, the if you look at the overall school total, you know, education, 5.6 million, you know, 5.85 million and now 300 doesn't sound so large. I understand secondary and tech didn't change significantly, about a thousand dollars. So, because we level funded secondary and tech overall dropped about 1,000. So I understand that portion like we can't change unless we drop secondary some and take our chances on what that looks like. I don't think we've seen reduction there. We've only heard projections for increase there every year. So I don't know that that's prudent. So that leaves the 38-ish school budget to, to reduce, right?
So to, just to, you know, add a little piece for those at home watching and listening. If there's an expedited discussion about using, let's say we don't, we, we pulled out the 150, we're holding it as a placeholder, but it's free cash for offsetting the school budget, but the 150. We left it in there as a placeholder.
For the current year.
For the current year.
Yes, yes.
But if we can expedite this conversation about the transportation piece, being able to purchase one or two vans, the capacity's there at that 150. If we're not using it to offset the FY '23 and we're utilizing that to purchase a couple of vehicles and do the startup costs, then you're eliminating, if we were asking for, you know, 300, you're eliminating 180,000 immediately.
But you're going to add back the staffing cost.
There's an add-back for, for the staffing cost and so, but.
But I agree with you.
On the immediate, you know, so you have a, a driver, you know, the, the, the add-back is a heck of a lot cheaper than the 180.
Should be less than half, I would hope.
Uh, it's far lower than that. I already had somebody approach me and tell me that they are Class 7D. I don't know what that means, but apparently if you're a school bus driver, it has to be 7D, I think, is the.
I had someone approach me at a school committee meeting.
Licensor that says that, you know.
I'll be available for next year.
I probably have the same person approach me. So, you know, on a part-time status, because that's really what you're looking for. So, you know, it's a couple hours in the morning, it's a couple hours in the afternoon. So, you know, the FM Kuzmeskis is paying $25 an hour. FRTA is paying about 22 because they just put an advertisement out there for a bus driver. So depending on.
Four hours-ish to five days a week.
You know, a lot cheaper than 180,000. So just encouraging that if we could not drag our feet on that conversation and really look at that, that's an immediate cut of, even if we're offsetting 30,000 for staffing.
150.
It's 150,000 immediately and we can.
That makes that 300 a lot more palatable at 150, I would think, to try to figure out where to drop it for the school.
Absolutely.
It's a lot less.
It, it's, it's getting away from the idea that we're going to do something to bring these students back in and eliminate out of district. Out of district is a very serious conversation. They had that. It took them 18 months to get there. I wouldn't ask them to undo that in the next two weeks because it costs too much. That doesn't make sense. But transportation is one that I think we could undo very quickly. If we wanted to make a movement on that, there would be an easy way to find 150,000 in RNA.
Yeah, and I personally at least, we haven't even discussed it because we don't have a proposal, but if it was 150,000 capital investment to buy vehicles, that's a one-time cost and I would have no concerns endorsing that out of the free cash balance we will have.
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
We have a, we have a strong free cash balance. I know you were saying exactly the 150.
No, but I'm saying.
But even if it was on top of the 150.
Correct.
We have the capacity in free cash this year.
If we're balancing it.
Fixing it long-term.
Yeah, if we're balancing it in RNA, then we have the capacity in free cash to purchase a couple of vehicles and get them outfitted and if they need a, a lift in them or, you know, whatever you need for those. Even if it's one to start, if you can't do two, whatever, but really having, instead of kicking that down the road until the summertime to talk about it, like it's the 13th sometime in the next eight days so that the school committee can have a thoughtful conversation on the 21st about that. That would be my.
I think I completely agree with you.
Yeah. That shoulders a lot of the burden.
Do we want it? Well, yeah, splits it. I mean, nearly. Do we want to, I mean, what's the message to the school at this point? Because it seems like that's what, that's where we are. Are we telling them we really need to see 300 because the gap is close, is basically four? After everything we've already done? I mean, and.
And it would behoove them to look at the transportation piece.
I would hope we don't need to repeat that again. And it was talked about at the last meeting, although I agree, there's been no substance, it seems, since they first brought us the budget when we brought it up, so. Maybe there is, I don't know, but.
Sorry. I, I would also like to make it clear that they understand that all other town departments came together and cut upwards of $600,000 from their budget, from the, from the town's budget. And so asking the school, although it is incredibly painful and unfortunate to cut 300, that's, you know, that's a portion of what everyone else has banded together and done. And I would also like to ask that we request that the principal and the superintendent attend the next meeting. So if we have specific, and the business manager, I'm sorry if that's not her correct title, but that she is here as well. So that way, if we do have specific questions, we have someone here who is able to answer those questions for us.
I agree.
Go ahead. You were going to say something, Scott, I think.
Well, you know, just to put it into context, if that's the number that we're asking, and I'm not sure I signed on to that number yet, but I, just for the sake of conversation, the bulk of their increase of the 533,000 in, in increase is 243 in out-of-district and 180. So you're talking 420?
Or 419 to 26?
Four, yeah. So 420 of that is, was out-of-district and associated transportation. That leaves 110? 110, whatever. I lost my place on here. So 113, 114,000, they've increased outside of that. And I think if you're looking at the increase to wages that they've embedded in there already because they're in contract negotiations, if you're adding in the utilities and fees, that would chew up a decent portion of that 114.
So almost all of it. You weren't wrong. I mean, I marked out some of those.
It's really just about their, their increase at this point is the out-of-district. So we're trying to, you know, while, I know Dan's not here to say it. So we're trying to, you know, while, I know Dan's not here to say it, he said it before and I would. Counter, he's always said there are things that are outside of our control and I would. I wouldn't put this in the same category. And the reason I say that is it is, it is within our control. Things that are outside of our, our control are things that third party put onto us. Assessments from secondary, assessments from Franklin County. Utility costs, fuel costs, those are outside of our control. Whether or not we ship somebody out and out of district is within the, the school's purview. And it comes with an associated cost. And when those decisions are made. Trying to figure out how you can incorporate even some of that into your operating budget. Instead of just assuming that the entire cost can be covered by raise and appropriation and adding to the budget. Is necessary. So. It seems like we're asking for a lot, but we're asking for, because they made that change. How much of that change are they willing to say they're absorbing within their current operating budget? And they've made some cuts. They've made about $85,000 in cuts since their original proposal. So in my estimate. 420 is what we said. Right?
We're short?
No, it's their increase to, you know, for special education.
Special ed is 420.
And they've cut.
After the 85. 85's already in there. The 85 in, the, the decreases in the.
Those decreases are already, they've already made those.
Correct.
So they've offset some of their out of district placement already by $85,000.
Or they've level funded the rest of the budget like we asked, whatever, however you want to look at it.
However you want to look at it. But they've made that concession that we asked for and we're asking for, how much of that choice for out of district placement? Are they able to. Get within their own current operating and not just ask the town to raise and appropriate the difference? If that number's 300, if that number's 200, I don't know, you know.
Can I ask a question? If, if we already have the students as out of district this year, why is it an additional 214? Above what this year is?
They never, they, it was not built into FY '23's budget. So the way that got funded was we have a sp, part of the special town meeting is $150,000 for that. And we're earmarking another $150,000 because they originally asked for 308.
Yeah.
And the prices are expected to go up next year.
Correct.
Maybe there's a way to have them educated within.
Maybe in '25 or '26, there won't be this year though, that's.
Yeah.
Right, I think I gotta agree with him. It's gonna take a while. If that's feasible, that's great. And that's probably saves a big chunk of that 420. Not just 180 of it, maybe it's 300 of it. I don't know. But we aren't there for another, at least another year.
To be clear, speaking with somebody who worked in education for well over 50 years. And has predominantly worked in special education and has sat through hundreds of IEP meetings. The likelihood of getting somebody that has been out of district placed. To return to the sending district is very slim, not likely. Once that decision is made, it's. Very likely that that decision will stay through the rest of their education. On paper, it sounds great to look back and say, we'll build up a very, you know, hearty program and they'll want to come back and everybody will come back and it'll save us some money. The reality is that hardly ever happens. The building up of the program is to try and stop it from happening in the future. If we can.
So. Kind of like what you were going through and those ideas. I took the, um, the town's, the, the non-school reductions. Just excluded benefits to stall total, right? Forget benefits right now because let's assume that's immutable and it is what it is.
Correct.
The. 600,000-ish that the rest was reduced by was about 11.4% reduction from where it was. Last meeting. If we took the school's original request of about 3930, I think it was, right before the 85. And we take 11.4%, um, it's. 447. 450, basically. Then you take the 85 out that they've already done, it leaves 362, which is about what we need. So I'm not saying that they can absorb the, that much of a decrease. Or that they, you know, have a place to get it from, but from a. Equal reductions across in terms of trying to do something, right? I think. On a percentage basis, it's the same reduction. The fact that their budget's almost 4 million. The rest of the town departments are five and a half. I mean, it feels different, I'm sure, because it's spread out across a bunch of different groups that made cuts. But the sum total of their cuts are more than we would even potentially ask the school to do, so. Just a perspective piece. And I think I threw out 300. I mean. 300 is still, you know, a $220,000 increase year over year. After, you know, for school budget, still a pretty significant increase. Anyway, I threw out a number because it seemed like all of you wanted to hear what I was gonna say, so. That's my number. I think we're around 400 short and I think around 300 is a. Gets us there and I agree, if we can figure out, if they can figure out transportation. To a substantial point in the next week or so, it's a big piece of it.
Well, it, it, so, transportation could be a big piece of it and there was, uh. One of the committee members at the last meeting had asked about not filling a vacant position. That became vacant, that's.
50.
30 because you wouldn't. You wouldn't necessarily decrease the benefit piece because you don't know, I don't know if that person was on benefits, if it was. You know what I'm saying?
But we budget assuming basically effectively, pretty much worst case across. Like the, the highest across the whole employee base. Because they can.
Could be reduction in the benefits.
So in theory, you probably could take it because we still have capacity in there and we always over. We take a very conservative approach to what that.
Okay.
Could be in terms of risk, liability. I think, I mean, that's my understanding is we have.
So.
Fair amount of capacity.
It's gonna be 50. But just out of their operating budget, you're talking 30 plus another, uh, you know, say 150, so there's 180 of it. And that's including adding back in staffing to drive the vans. You know? So 180 of, of your request. Can be non, non-staffing that are currently working.
Yep. And you could, preschool was brought up, you could bring that to 20 to 30 dollars, that brings another 30 to 60,000 dollars a year. Pays for the program, I mean, there's other things.
Uh, at their next meeting, there was a request and I think you, you both saw it, there was a request from a staff member that went to the superintendent. And it's all about revenue and it's really.
Yes, I thought it was really good.
Really looking at the revenue side and I, and I would agree that we always talk about cutting. But if their net result that they ask us to RNA can be offset by what they know as. Suitable and stable revenue source. Then the net result is the same. So if there's an ability to, you know, raise revenue to offset some of that request. That's no different on our end because it, the request to RNA becomes less.
Well, and they have over $100,000 in there every, you know, and it goes up or down every year a little bit, but they have it in grants that offset it. That, that bring that RNA down every year. It's already built in, so there are other sources, I think that, that were questioned that are not showing.
Correct.
And what do those do to offset this special education increase? Because that's really what.
Yeah.
The challenges.
You know, one of them was circuit breaker and there's other, you know, these are ongoing annual revenue sources and sometimes they're unstable. But they're always there and we can earmark some of that for. And there's a lot more that go with that and how they use it and there's regulations on that, I get that, but the idea that there's a portion that could offset. The request if we are moving it forward to try and find 300.
Well, and a little unstable, but counted on for 24. Gives us the ability to push that. Burden of reduction out a year, the capacity goes up a little. How you spread that out changes, it's not as painful potentially because you're spreading it over more years, even if that goes down in the following years a little bit.
So, I respect the discussion, but I think we're getting really, really far into the weeds about where the money and everything is coming from. And I don't feel like there's been a consensus yet on the number.
Correct.
Agreed.
It was just an idea of, you know, how, how we get there.
Well, I feel like that's for the school to figure out, not for us.
Are there any other suggestions? I know Jake put one out at 300.
I think we should be somewhere between 300 and 350,000.
350.
What's that?
350.
I'm the outlier. As much as I'm vocal about it, I think it would be. While I think it could be done at 350. I would probably go between 250 and 3. I wouldn't go above the 3. Yeah, there has to be some integrity of keeping. The educational benefit there. And I'm not saying that. I think if you look at a long-range plan, some this year and then, I know the, the chair has already mentioned and other members of the committee have all, already mentioned. Looking at over the next two to three years, how to rein that in. I don't think you can do it in one year. I don't want to see the budget get dismantled to the point. But Jake put out 300, I would, I would cap it at that for a request. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts. We've had a couple at 350, we had a couple at 3.
I'm gonna split the difference in 3, stage 325. I, I, I struggle with seeing some of the numbers and to be quite honest. As I said before, I don't have kids in the school, I don't have that type of relationship with the school. So when I'm looking at numbers and I, I see our per pupil costs being as high as what they are and. You know, our, our teacher to classroom ratios being as small as they are. I, I really struggle with the school budget and hearing that they can't keep services. And that they are concerned that they won't be able to provide the education that they have. If, if funding is cut and, and I kind of feel like. For, but. This is one of the first schools I ever heard of where every child, we had that back, the apple leases and things like that for the kids and. You know, that, that, at that time was not the norm in every single elementary school. And while I wanted the children of Irving to have the best education. I do think there are limits and I think we are reaching those limits. And I, I don't want the children to suffer. I know Principal Candido was very concerned about having to cut staff. And I absolutely understand those concerns, but. I, I think at some point the, the school has to get, every other department has given. And I think the school, it, it, they need to step up and do their part as well.
I just want to be. Certain that people understand. So the original, when you're talking about numbers. We're talking about. An additional 300 off of their latest or off of their. So on top of the 85 that was already done.
You're, you're asking what I was proposing?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're asking for a reduction of $385,000, basically, from their operating budget. 85 of which was already done. And I just want to make sure that I have the, talking about the right numbers. That would still. 85, and I'm just gonna use round numbers because it's easier. 233, is that around what you said before? Somewhere in that ballpark, year-over-year increase? Two something?
Yeah, 220, but yeah.
230, 220?
Yeah, yeah. Cause I'm going after grants, so it's about 13 less.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm doing it before grants.
Okay, yeah, so.
Yeah, because, you know, just comparing, comparing the two.
Yep.
So it's still an increase and if you're talking of, you know, 115 of that or, or whatever it is that they have for all of the different. Increases. It's a big cut. And I would say I'd be, I'd be happy if. Be ecstatic if they could meet 300. It's, it's asking them to absorb their entire out of district.
Well, with the 85, yeah. Well.
With, it's close.
With the 85, it is.
It's very close.
Yeah. But it's absorbing it after an increase, it's not.
Correct.
There's still increase in there.
I guess I would, I would counter that, Scott, to some degree and say, if we're asking for all the other town departments, like you had said, maybe it's time to. Have a, a shift in mentality of thinking for capital. Maybe it's time for the elementary school to revisit some things such as classroom sizes and preschool costs. And ways that they, they can shift and, and work within a budget that they have.
Agreed. To be clear though, we're, we're talking apples and oranges when you're talking about asking people to cut the request. But not, not drop below. So if you're, if you're asking about increasing that to 350, 400. You're asking for the budget overall, the operating budget to decrease. Even inclusive of the increase in out of district placement. We've asked all of the departments to. Only increase where they feel appropriate. So they're, they're just two different requests and I want to make sure that people understand that they are two different requests. One is asking them to lower their operating cost because we, it's very high and, and is going to be unsustainable. And the other one is to minimize their requests. So they're two different things. The other department heads, not a single department head, had to cut services, had to cut staff members. So those requests, while they seem similar, they're not quite the same. Just want to make sure that, you know, we're. We're clear that they're, they're two different requests. And I'm still agreeing with you that I would put forward the 300 and see if they can get there, whether they get there through. Revenue sources or transportation. That alone would probably, you know, and, and maybe not replacing one staff member that's already retired, that alone would get two-thirds of it.
I don't think I follow what you were illustrating and I'll, and I'll explain why, maybe I just misunderstood a word you used. Year-over-year. Budget change for school is still an increase.
Correct.
It's not a decrease year-over-year. We're not asking them to cut from prior year's budget. We're asking them to absorb an increase that they didn't ask for necessarily, you know, I get that, the 420. But we're, if they were to get to the 300. I think 300 is the right one. Uh, the, yeah. We would be absorbing more than half of that cost. Into the budget and asking them to find the other half of that, in that special ed increase, basically, right? Because it was about 420. And so. If they reduce 300, their budget change year-over-year is 220-ish thousand, which is more than half of. The unexpected cost, I'll just say, right? So yes, they have to find the rest of it, but. It is still an overall increase. I understand what you're saying. I would hope. Position that's not filled, look at how you're charging for things, look at what you're paying for, for. Supplies and other things that, there are alternative methods that maybe other towns use. The other funding sources you have is you don't incorporate in the budget you present to us. And there's some level of risk and sustainability, but all of those are only, you know, looking to offset the other half. So, so I didn't, so I didn't hear that you said a reduction in their budget. You're saying it's a reduction because after special ed it would be less.
Correct.
Okay.
And we did ask the departments to be level funded excluding their benefits and electricity and fuel usage. So I think with $350,000 reduction, including the 85,000, so it'd be 200-some thousand that have to continue to cut. I think that's more than generous since they're still not level funded.
To be clear, it's 300 plus 85, not inclusive of 85. It's what.
Well, we used that the way we talked about, 300 to 350.
There was other suggestions.
Okay, so I don't know, then I, I, when I came back in, he asked me what I was talking about, so I just, that's what I went back to. If that's not what's on the table, like, that's fine. If that's not what's on the table, like, that's fine. At the end of the day, it's the number that we think works. How they get there is for them to sort that out and see if they can, and come back with something. And I'm only bringing it up because it's 10:10 practically, and we can't go much longer tonight. I mean, we've already gone, just on this topic, we've gone, you know,
Two hours.
An hour plus more than the school committee does on their meetings, so usually. So I just want to, you know, acknowledge that it's a storm tonight. We've got other business still to do. I'm not saying that's the number we have to put forward. We need to come to a consensus here on that. But I think there's lots of ways that they can get there, maybe beyond that or close to that, and see what they come up with. Unless, so if someone wants to make a motion, and I won't make it, but if someone wants to make a motion with a number, and just to formalize it and put it out there for what we are asking the school to decrease by, from what we have now, just for clarity.
Well, Jake, while you were out the, I guess kind of the consensus that was going around was 350. I, you know, I don't mind putting that motion out, but.
Did the ask is to reduce 350,000 from the presented budget?
Yes.
And you said that's your motion? I don't want to put words in your mouth. You'll make the motion?
I make the motion that we submit to the school committee and for the school budget to reduce the budget by 350,000.
Nice second thought.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Any abstaining? I don't think, I think we hurt everybody. Okay. Oh. All right, I'll redo that, if you don't mind. Peter, so I'm going to rewind a little. We had a motion, a second, and a vote, but we're going to back up to, Bill, I'm paraphrasing, made a motion to request the school committee and the school reduce the budget by $350,000 from the, as presented tonight budget. And that was seconded by Charlie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just see the eyes with just hands, please? I'm getting tired. Thank you.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The eyes have it. So that's the message. We will, we'll meet on 21st. We'll meet on 27th. You're all available for the 27th? I don't know if we've confirmed that date, so I should ask, 7 on the 27th. We'll continue this. We'll have updated recap before the week is out, or by the end of this week, for everybody to review. And the recap sheet with the changes we talked about. And we'll have a wage recommendation and wage info to discuss at that next meeting as well. The only other one I just want to touch on and spend five minutes or less. If we aren't there, we aren't there. Discussion regarding the revised IPMIL demo proposal. And really, unless I'm missing anything that's critical for kind of work outside of the meeting in the next two weeks, it's just, is there anything further around potential ways to put this forth to the voters this year that people want to see? We got information on a debt exclusion, a capital exclusion, I think it was, you know, override, et cetera. Yes.
Question, when it's going to be presented to the voters, are we going to have, this is how much it will cost you in your taxes? That kind of a thing, or is it, I mean, because I'm not going to be able to do it off the top of my head, and I don't think other people can either in a town meeting.
So depending on what we choose, I think my preference or my hope is that we come up with a recommendation if we're going to put this forward, and a recommendation on how we're going to fund it. And borrowing, that's a debt service we got to add to this. An override is permanent, you know, a capital or a debt exclusion is, until the debt is paid or one year, if it's capital. So if we wanted to do it in one year and just paid, no borrowing, it's a one-year tax change. And it goes back, like, that extra just happens once and moves on. You know, we pay, we all pay it or we don't, voters decide. If we pay it, if it gets paid, it's done. Following year, it's just 2.5% on the regular base. And in terms of your question about impact, when we determine which one, we can, from what I've seen so far, I believe the assessor and the team can come up with approximately how much, how many dollars per thousand that is for every resident. And then if you know your assessed value, you can come up approximately with what that is for you, for each individual. And we will have an average household $220,000 assessment is this many dollars. And you can kind of get that ballpark without doing the math on the fly. We can come up with those kind of data points to have. But I don't think we should bring more than one option. I think we need to bring an option we feel is the right option. It gets upheld, it gets voted down. We can bring it back in a different way if we so choose in the future, but, I, that's my feeling. Go ahead, please.
I was just going to say, we had talked about community engagement and having a meeting, and I think that's where we can flesh out and get a straw poll. If we have that meeting about, you know, next steps moving forward and present these as potential ideas and get a feel for what people might want to see. The last one was well-attended, and I think if you talk about this one being, to have a discussion about the financial impact going forward and how to do that, I think, you know, we may need more room in the gym to do that, which would be a good thing.
We're going to do that. We got to do it soon.
Yeah.
It's late. My brain is fuzzy. For the non-one-time debt exclusion, do we have a kind of an idea of how many years and what that impact would be to residents? Was that provided to us already? And if not, is it possible to ballpark, you know, we're going to do it for seven years? So this would be what the impact was for our next meeting?
We need to decide on the years.
Yeah.
We need to decide on the years to get the number. The years drive the number, because it's the interest for how long and all that.
Right, but I didn't know if there was a example scenario provided to us already.
I don't believe so. I think it was the details on how the debt exclusion works, where we're going to borrow for it and spread that over multi-year instead of a single one-time cost for the voters.
Okay.
For those that are familiar, that's Greenfield.
Is the debt exclusion the same way as a 2.5 over, right, you have both paper book?
Yes. It's the same in the way it's implemented.
Right.
And approved. It is not the same in what it does, but yes, it's that process. All three are. The capital exclusion, if I'm using the right terms, is a one-time. And I think the estimate, without looking at it, on a 220-ish thousand-dollar home assessment was about $191. One-time, one-year cost. Off like 24, you have an extra $491 you pay that year, and then it goes away. And it's done. Number two was the debt exclusion, which is we borrow the 4 million for however many years, which costs five or six or whatever with interest. And then we spread it out over that many years as a extra assessment. So I don't know. If it's five years, don't count, these are not calculated numbers. Instead of costing you 500 one-time, maybe it's now 750, but you spread it over five years. Everybody pays, you know, whatever, 125 extra a year for five years, now it's paid off. Whatever that looks like. That's a debt exclusion. And then, 2.5 override, just we raised the base, so we paid for it this year, and now we have that capacity for $4 million more of operational expenses in the following years. Is that about what that would do?
Yeah, correct.
And we're not recommending that?
No.
Or something smaller, and we plan to save it until we do it. But yeah, either way, I'm not a fan in that direction.
The only way you can get rid of that is an underwriting. I've never heard of it.
It's on the books.
It exists. Executed it. And the only other one is we borrow and we put the debt capacity in the budget. And I don't think we can, and I don't think we should, personally.
Is there a way to combine, like, you know, one from column A and one-third from column B? And, I mean, do a hybrid?
I mean, if you want, if you wanted to do a capital exclusion and a debt exclusion, I guess we could, but that feels a little weird.
Yeah.
Be more like a debt exclusion or capital exclusion with a, like a infusion from, no, you're doing infusion from stabilization or,
To offset.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Something outside of those funding sources to offset it? Sure, we have the 600,000 from the grant. It's already offsetting. I know I said four, but that offset is the number that we're coming from. So sure, you could take a million dollar stabilization and debt exclude the rest, or capital exclude the rest.
Capital. But I think all those conversations and the questions you're asking are one that we need to ask with a larger pool. This is a big conversation. It's a big ticket item. Asking it here with the nine of us.
It's having the results and having in front of you, if you do this, this is how it's going to affect your tax rate. I mean, so.
Right, but I don't think we should do that at the town floor. I think we need to do that ahead of time.
Oh, no, I agree.
Yeah.
So before we hear from Mariah, can, to do this, and I have a feeling that's what she wants to bring up, to do this public engagement meeting, we do need to put some decision around what we're going to present. We can bring other ones or come up with others after, but we got to come in with. We have debt exclusion.
Yep.
Right, we have what debt exclusion would be. We know that number. We can get something around borrowing, but we can get something around borrowing, I would recommend that we don't just straight borrow. I don't think we have a budget capacity to do that. And if we all agree, then I don't think we present it. Because do we have the capacity to take on a $3.4 million borrowing debt service in our regular operating budget today? 1.6 was six figures. I don't know what 3.4 will be, but I'm guessing it's 300, $400,000 a year for 10, 15, 20 years, whatever that was.
Would it make sense to just quick poll everybody and see if borrowing is even an option? Because then we could just take it right off the table.
I guess that's what I'm trying to ask. Is anybody in favor of even putting that out there?
No.
Not if it goes into RNA, no.
No.
Yeah, okay. So that's off the table. Capital exclusion, we know, is a 2.5 override on the table?
No.
Not on my mind.
Okay, so the only other one's the debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion.
How long do we want to pay interest on demo? How long do we think that makes any sense to spread out the cost?
I think that's,
I'm not in favor of very long, but we need to have a number for discussion. So I just say, what number of years do we think we want to project something for the discussion?
Three, five, and seven. Three, five, and seven. Can we make that happen?
Three, five, and seven years?
Yeah.
So that 4, whatever you had there originally, the one-shot deal, was that for 4 million or the 3.4?
The 3.4, I should have spoke correctly. We have 600 in grant, so it was the remaining. It was a 3.4.
Right.
I'm in favor of three and five.
I don't want to go seven.
I don't want to go seven years in cost, in just carrying that debt.
Those just sounded like good numbers.
I feel like we're just,
You can do, you know, take a million dollar stabilization and then,
Right, and we could have those,
4 at, it might be a little more palatable.
But I think having a starting point of a conversation of what are the numbers if we were to do a debt exclusion for three years or five years at the 3-point, you know, because we do have general interest rates and Jen should be able to, I saw the email, we have the model already there on what it looks like.
Just don't want to get too many versions, but yes, I agree.
We have the model there, and so if we're looking at borrowing a three-year loan or a five-year loan, and then doing a debt exclusion on that, or a debt exclusion for one year, I think those are the only really two options.
Do we want a proposal for half of it out of stabilization and the rest on a three-year debt exclusion? Or a one-year debt exclusion?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see what it looks like.
Like, we take 1.8 and we pay for it, and we take 1.8 and we either one-time or whatever. I'm just thinking it's something. We can go either way.
As a third option, and we can play with numbers from there. Does that make sense?
So one point is the what?
Before we finalize that, unless anyone else had options we didn't talk about, I'll let Mariah go, just because she adds some different direction color before we have Brian take full notes here.
That's okay. I was going to, I had two things. One of them was if you could all just kind of figure out how much you'd be comfortable with coming out of stabilization. I think that that, you already had that conversation. It sounds like you're going with a half for now as those purposes. The other thing was just in,
What is half?
1.8. About 1.8, 1.7, somewhere in there, 1.8.
Yeah, yeah.
And then just in terms of community engagement, I know that clearly there's more discussion that needs to be had over the next couple of meetings about the budget overall. But it would be helpful for me to know, it sounds like we're going to have some kind of community discussion regardless of where the exact numbers or proposal stands. And so it would be helpful for me to get that scheduled now, so I can do that advertising, especially because I'm going to be out for the first two weeks of April. So if we want to have this before annual town meeting, and we want to advertise this, give people at least two weeks a heads-up, I need to get everything set up before the end of March.
You mean tomorrow? Because I'm only saying because we have to finalize the ATM on the 10th. So it has to be feedback and decided by the 10th to put it on the ATM. Or it goes on a special. There was some discussion, maybe I should go back to that. There was some discussion about holding this separate on a special closer to June 30, rather than trying to stuff it into the ATM because of all this stuff.
So given the fact that, given the fact that the only three proposals were all debt exclusion, which will not impact RNA and budget.
Correct.
To me, it's not a push to get it on the annual. If we have to push it back a little bit and put it on the special, none of it will affect FY24 budget going forward. Our only option that we're putting out there is debt exclusion or some variation of an exclusion. So it's not going to affect operating.
It's RNA, but it's separate RNA.
It comes out of, you know, direct assessment to a, to an assessment.
I was just going to say, I'll just throw it out there. Planning is going to have a, is asking, going to request a special in June. It's going to be for all the zoning bylaw changes, which will be very dry. So we would, we would, I at least as a planning board member, I would welcome a topic that would bring people out.
I think both might, but 3.6 will,
My chair might kill me now, but I would welcome a topic that would get people to come to a planning board.
The one-time fee was to be split up twice like their regular taxes.
That's a great question. I think it's be split up the same, because I think your tax bill would just be your normal.
Right.
And then this new one as your assessment, and then split into the two. The projected and then the actual, now the new two split, so, yeah. So, okay. I still think moving toward April would be a good idea, towards when you get back, I'm assuming, right? To late April for a republic session.
So you all have meetings.
We're going to be developing in May and putting out an SDM before the end of May to have one in June. So it's not actually that far away.
So you all have meetings April 10th and 24th, is that correct?
Yes.
10th for sure, 24th, sure.
I'm assuming that all of you would want to be there, so I'm wondering if we do it. Well, I was going to say the third week, but if I'm getting back the 13th, will that give me enough time?
Is a Wednesday feasible?
Either the 19th or the 26th. Or I guess we could, do you all want to, how soon do you all want to know? I guess if this is, I guess, are you planning on doing this in June? Is that where we've landed for the SDM?
SDM, yeah.
Okay.
So we're backing into a sometime May SDM finalization, so we really should be finalizing, or getting that feedback and discussing what's the final option, because we'll have a few meetings by the end of April into early May.
Okay. So would doing it the 19th work? That would give me three days from when I get back. Ideally, I'll be able to get most of this set up beforehand and,
April?
April.
April 19th.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
What time? Sevenish?
Nobody said yes. He's waiting on that.
That works for me.
Yes.
Yes.
7:00 PM. Yes?
Yep.
So April 19th at 7:00 PM?
Just wanted to check on availability at the school, because I think we should do it in the gym again, because it'd be a good turnout, I would expect.
Okay.
That's school vacation week?
Oh, is that a bad week to hold it then?
People will be away.
We'll be traveling, and the following Wednesday is the planning board public hearing.
Patriot's Day, it follows the same week as Patriot's Day.
Say KIA Tax Day? No.
What about the following Tuesday?
Only here.
The 25th?
What time, what did they say?
Oh, crud, Jake, and I can't do Tuesday.
What's the 26th?
The 26th is, well, do.
Oh, wait, that's your, that's your planning board.
I thought she moved it to Wednesday, the 26th for the planning board.
I thought it was the 25th.
Yeah, the dates are, one date says the 25th and one date says the 26th.
Okay, so we don't know about that yet.
Why don't we?
Because people are gonna be away.
Sure.
Well, that was the basic.
Well, his.
Anyone confirm it's school vacation?
It is, it is.
Thank you.
Although, it seems like that's the only date that works.
Well, hang on. What about the 24th? I know it's meeting night, but it's not like we don't do STMs and try to fit it all in. The board could meet at 6:00 instead of 6:30. Try to get as much as we can do by 6:45, have the public session at 7:00 to, I don't know, 9:00 maybe, hopefully. And then be done, or finish up for 10:00 and we're out. The ATM will be completed already. That bulk of what we're spending tons of time on will be.
Done.
Hopefully in the books, if you will, and ready to, voters to weigh in. So, we'll have work, but I'm hoping we have capacity to have a.
Is there a huge backlog of things that haven't been addressed because?
That we're going to care about on the 24th?
I don't know, I'm asking the question.
I'm furthering your question. At the moment, no, but.
You all still, will need to review all the proposed zoning changes and weigh in.
Yeah, but we have until sometime in May. Those changes are happening in the following, that week, in theory, if that's when their public hearing is, so won't be ready anyway.
And the ask originally was, as soon as draft four is available, regardless of our public hearing, it was to be sent to the board of selectmen. So that way they have it as soon as, so they had that pre-time to be looking at it. So you guys should be getting draft four as soon as it's available from the attorney.
We're probably not gonna have anything to, we're, we're gonna have lots to digest, and I don't think, and then we'll hear feedback from the public hearing.
It's only yay thick.
Yeah, exactly. We're not gonna have anything probably to bring about it on the 24th anyway. We're gonna talk about it on the following meeting or two.
We just know that once the public hearing happens, we can't change anything that's gonna be presented at town meeting.
Why you be like that? Okay.
We just tell it over again.
So, we'll have to sort that out. If we can get a draft two weeks earlier, and it might change a little, fine. We needed to, to review it on the 10th, after ATM is finalized, so, oh my God. The board can have another meeting in between the 10th and the 24th if we have to.
We have had.
24th at 7:00 PM, okay? Tentatively, board will start at 6:00 that night.
Yeah.
Recession for the public session. Brian, back to your question.
We'll work on that together.
Three and five-year debt exclusion for the full amount.
Full amount, not 1.8.
Three and five-year debt exclusion for the full amount. Three-year debt exclusion for half, half out of stabilization. Capital exclusion for the full amount. I think that was it.
Yep. Okay.
And those will be, and we'll have a sample, I'm sorry, we'll have a sample of what that looks like for the household, kind of trying to do that same exercise for each of those scenarios. And they don't have to be to the penny. We're trying to get a, a generalization. We make a decision following the 24th and put together the final, here's what that looks like in, in more detail for the SDM.
And what day do you want all of that information for? Your next meeting?
The 24th.
The 24th of April or the 27th of March when you meet again?
No, April. I mean, we don't need to see it beforehand.
We.
Okay.
I'd like to, but I don't know if you want to, but.
I thought that the hope for the meeting for the 24th was that you would all have a proposal.
We would show, we would have public input on those four proposals, on what, you know, kind of questions, Q and A, understand what voters would like to know more about. And straw poll on which of those scenarios, pick one, and which has the, like, most interest, because we gotta put one forward. Is that?
Correct.
I heard from all of us.
What I don't wanna do is have the eight of us choose one proposal, wait all the way to the 24th, and have a resounding, no, we don't like that proposal, and we didn't come prepared to talk about the other three options.
I guess my thought was, like so many things, I think when people have too many options, convert, big conversations like that get messy. And so it can be helpful to have a suggestion, not, we are definitely going this way, but it can be helpful to say, you've all discussed it. This is the direction that we are thinking of heading. What is your feed, what is your feedback? Because people give you feedback. They're not, you know, they're not gonna shy away from that, and so I think it might be helpful for you to all kind of digest that and say, in your opinion, this makes sense.
At 6:00.
I'm with Mariah. I thought the point was that information was gonna be given to us. We would be meeting again, looking at it and saying, and, and kind of picking what we thought was the option, but still presenting others, but kind of saying, this is what we think is the, the, the best or, you know, the most feasible.
So let me ask you this. Do we need, as a group, to discuss those four, or can we all just pick one, meet for five minutes before the meeting and, and take a poll, and that's the one that's the one recommended by the group, and the rest are alternates? I mean, is this something we wanna hash out, or is it just a, I like that number, and that's what?
We're meeting in two weeks, right?
Yeah.
And we have the numbers in just to get an idea of what we're looking at?
Back to March 27th.
I, I like where Pete is going, and I was gonna say, can we have the numbers before the 27th, so we, I, I'm sorry, but I think giving it five minutes ahead of a meeting is a disservice to the conversation if there needs to be one. So can we have the numbers ahead of March 27th, and can we discuss it on March 27th if necessary?
I think there's gonna be zero capacity to discuss in detail, unless we wanna be here till 11:12 again, because we're gonna be talking about budget for a while. Can we have them ahead of time? That means it's not, it's not two weeks, it's even less, so I don't think that's feasible. We don't, we, we put way too much demands on capacity to do things right now. But if we're meeting on the 3rd and the 10th, I'm sure we can have it for the 3rd if we meet, and definitely for the 10th. Is that okay?
That's fine, get the budget squared.
And maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but pick one of four numbers, that's all it is. Right, to some degree, yeah. So, anyway. All of those have zero impact on the town budget. It's 100% impact on the voters, so to me, it's a personal decision for every person. I don't know how much.
Are you saying that each of you will have a recommendation?
No. No, we'll come to a consensus.
In how long?
We're gonna meet before.
Supposedly, five minutes.
That's my concern. We just have, you know, we've had multiple hour-long discussions about this. I, I'm concerned that five minutes is not going to suffice.
Thank you, Mariah.
We are going to meet on it, about it, on the 3rd or the 10th, in a regular joint meeting. We'll have the numbers by the 3rd. If we don't have a meeting on the 3rd, we'll have it on 10th. We'll figure that out in two weeks.
Okay.
We'll talk about it then. My five minutes was vetoed a long time ago.
Yes, it was.
Does that give you what you need to prepare, put out a notice, then we'll?
I, so I have one more question. Who should be there? So do we want someone from Time Bond to be there? Are there, is there anyone else? I mean, we'll invite everyone from town. I'm hoping that, you know, Glenn can be there, talk about things, you know, Chief Holst, talk about securing things, like people who have been involved, but in terms of outside people, we need to invite. Do we wanna invite anyone from FERCog, those kinds of things?
We need some of our, we're gonna be there mostly. We need someone from the financial team, for sure, who can talk to some of those scenarios better than we can.
Like Jen, or you mean someone else?
It could be Jen, yeah, probably Jen.
Okay.
Jockey, maybe, you know, it depends if we're talking about the tax side of it or the funding side of it, I don't know, but just, just experts on that.
Did you schedule to have the roofs checked out for hazardous?
That's not a thing I haven't been given approval for.
Oh, because that could change it by a hundred thousand, right?
I think we decided we weren't necessarily going to spend anything till we decided if the voters wanted to spend anything.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, we did.
So one thing that I did find out, and we're waiting on a further conversation, is when I brought up that $100,000, I was told that that was not accurate anymore, which brought a lot of confusion on my part. So I don't know how much it would reduce it if there was not asbestos in the roofs. Apparently, $100,000 is not the accurate number despite them telling me that.
I, I still think we need to challenge the scope, but no matter what, let's take what we hope is the worst case. Let's see what the voters are willing to do, are interested in the public session. If we get to something that sounds like it's feasible, we'll bring it to an SDM. We'll still do everything we can to bring it down as far as we can and have somebody who knows how to use a wrecking ball show up.
In answer to your question about FERCog or Time Bond, I don't wanna speak for the finance committee, but I don't necessarily see what benefit they would bring to coming to the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Primarily, I think it's financial. It'd be great if public safety and, you know, public works are there to answer things that may come of questions about that stuff, but it's mostly gonna be kind of a financial and a mess and a risk conversation, I think, for the voters. Good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we decide on 24th?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else finance has for us tonight?
Did you wanna deal with the EV charging question?
Yeah, sure. Review of the EV charger proposal for the police station? So I believe Capital reviewed this in their last meeting?
Yeah, we did.
184B or 148B or whatever those numbers were.
This is one of the things.
Recommendation was 184B.
The one that's fully funded and for public use in the front of the building.
Correct.
It's got a separate.
Front corner, separate meter?
Yep.
Yes.
So it's like one on the kind of the police parking side, one on the public side?
Yeah, in the front.
Fully funded.
Fully funded.
Free.
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 Nothing's ever free, but, yes.
Grant funded.
Free, free, free?
Grant funded, yes.
Grant funded integrates with our existing charge point management system, et cetera, et cetera. Questions, concerns, motions?
Brian, is it the same size as the one, the ones in Irving Center or?
Yes.
Level 40 amp?
Yes.
I think they were planning a 50 amp for just capacity, but I believe that's the capacity. Oh, 50 amp, probably feeding one charger, there's two.
Right.
Two cables, so it's reduced to 25.
Are we talking fast charge, slow, slow charge?
That's very slow.
He is, he is.
About a 2.5, because they're gonna super.
A 50 amp AC charger, even if it's 150 amp, it's still.
It's 100.
It's 100, okay.
It's 100 amp, and it's two 30 amp chargers, I believe. Two ports, 30 amp each at the charger, so it's, but they might turn them up closer to 40 is what they were saying, because it's adjustable on the inside, on the, on the units somehow.
But it's not a DC fast.
And that expects.
It helps, but it's slow compared to DC fast charging, and it certainly is slow when you start looking at the vehicles are getting larger and larger with battery capacity, it, it takes, you're still overnight.
We're not doing anything, we're not gonna do anything fast.
That'd be hundreds of thousands of dollars for a DC fast charger, and that is a new service.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have, yeah. We don't have the incentives to do that at this point, so. It is a pre-meter tap if they'll let us do it. That's the only thing from EverSource. Tap right there, so, you know. Other questions, concerns, or motions?
Just looking for language.
184B.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I can make that motion if you don't want more specific language.
So the authorization to?
Yeah.
Work with Voltrak?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the proposal from Voltrak, quote number 184 Bravo, in the amount of $45,031. Estimated to be zero after grant awards for two-port, level-two charger at the police station, and authorize Brian Smith to execute all agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that good enough? Okay. Motion to adjourn the joint meeting and continue the slow forward meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for the long haul. Review of the multi-year residential curbside collection contract negotiations. Is there anything of substance tonight?
They did get back to me this afternoon. I apologize, I did not send that to you. Give me one second, I will pull it up.
If there's a high level you wanna share, that's fine.
There's a high level, and I told them we would discuss it as a board.
Okay.
So the, the response, I, I pushed back asking for the low, the low threshold.
Could I ask, anyone who wants to continue conversation, please take it outside, because we're still meeting. Sorry, but it's late. I just wanna finish up. It's hard to hear up here. Thank you.
The low threshold trigger to start a credit back to the town, I pushed back and asked for 425. They had originally said 325.
That dropped below?
It, it had to drop below, and I pushed back with 425. They come back and agreed to four. So it would be a trigger at 525, not five, to, for future.
For a surcharge?
For a surcharge. That moved up to 525 with a credit.
Rebate?
With a rebate credit trigger at four, uh, $4. And I had also asked for, their language on the fee increase is the greater of either 5% or the CPI, the index increase that they follow, the CPIU.
Yeah.
For the New England, it's PADD1, if they're 1A, I think is the chart they use. And their proposal was the greater of whichever one that is.
Five or the.
Five or that, and I pushed back and asked for the lesser of the two, given that we're not pushing back on their 122 for the full amount. The response I got today said that there were several years that the increase that was previously negotiated failed to encapsulate what was actually being seen on the increase on the CPI, and that they felt that they could not agree to the lesser of the two, and that either matching CPI or 5%, the greater of the two is the best they would offer.
I think we had, I don't know if you know off the top of your head what the CPI kind of has been trending usually, CPIU?
The CPIU, I had that.
If not, that's okay.
I had that figure. Get it for your next meeting. I might have it on my desktop. Give me one second. CPIU, I have it right here, because I knew you were gonna ask that.
I know, I'm predictable sometimes.
It's just, it's a hundred and something items long, so give me one second to get to the rubbish disposal. Why am I not finding it? If you have something else you wanna ask before we get there?
Other questions? I mean, I'm, how do you feel about the fuel piece? Like the deadband between four and five and a quarter, basically, and then rebate if it's lower. And this is on diesel. This is on whatever, the standard fuel, right, on diesel, yeah. And the surcharge over 5.5?
Sounds reasonable. I don't, I don't see this a buster, you know?
Hopefully it don't go over five again, and I don't think we'll see very much into three again either.
So the CPIU, sorry, not that. The gas, the diesel index has been hovering right around five now, and that's why I pushed back at 525 to give a little wiggle room. The last two months has gone down to 4, 489, but I still wanted that wiggle room. But I still wanted that wiggle room, uh, starting it at five didn't make sense to me, that's why I pushed back at five twenty-five.
I roughly think a year, within the last two years, it was around three, three, three and a quarter, three fifty, three thirty, three fifty, and then it got up to almost five fifty. It's close to six.
Just shy of six.
And then it's dropped back down, so I, I feel like that's a, hopefully.
I feel comfortable with five twenty-five.
Yeah, if we see a sudden.
I'm sorry, there's, there's no rhyme or reason for how they list all of these items and it's eleven.
Absolutely, totally fine. Do we want to come back, talk about it more, go back to them, any thoughts on that? Whether or not we take the five percent or CPIU rubbish? Or if we, you know, the greater of, right, that's basically what they want.
Greater of, yeah.
Or do we wanna see the CPIU and talk about it more, I don't know what we wanna do, do you guys, or just your thoughts?
We have it built in for the one twenty-two now, correct?
Built in.
For the budget, did you?
Put it at one twenty for right now.
One twenty, so we're two thousand off.
If you agreed to this, I would just say that we need the rate set.
Yes, sorry.
No later than February or something of that nature, because we need to finalize our budget process. We can't be waiting until April to hear what the, are we going with five percent? Or are we going with the CPI because that's where we've arrived? So we do need to choose a cutoff date with when we're looking at that rate and making a determination.
Are you talking future?
Yeah, for the few fiscal years.
Right, if the three of you agreed to this and you agreed to an escalator for years two and three. I think we need to specify in that clause that as of X date, each year, that will be determined. Are we doing five percent, are we doing something else? Because in theory, I'm gonna give you a draft budget, including waste management for the very first week of December. And you're gonna be reviewing budgets for months, but at some point, we need to have a firm number in there and I don't think we can go much farther beyond late January before that final number is determined.
Jan to Jan was seven percent.
That makes sense.
Thank you, I just looked at it, yeah.
Did you just find it?
Just found it.
It's under trash, yeah, I, I just did a search and found it real quick.
So Scott, I mean, having sat down and, and negotiated with them, do you think this, what they've offered is, is fair?
Yeah, I mean, I think we were, you know, what they offered, other than the original, the, the huge increase from ninety-seven thousand to one twenty-two. Which is their way of saying that, you know, they were under budgeting or under, undercharging. We didn't give a lot of pushback on that here, so I didn't push back on that there. These changes are just sort of to lock it in, I'm not, I'm not opposed to signing it, I wouldn't hold it up over, uh, a small piece here or there. I would like to meet with them one more time to talk about the final product, should give deadlines for when they set, uh, when they notify us what the new, uh, figures are gonna be for the, for the increase, whether it's gonna be the five percent or the other one. And the other piece that I did, uh, she didn't respond back regarding that, but I had asked their formula that they use to determine the cost, has a component in there that says the percentage that they use. The percentage of their total cost, which is derived from diesel fuel. They use that in their formula for how much they're gonna charge us for a surcharge above and beyond. And it's not set in the contract and one of my asks was that, that is set in stones that we know. So it, it can't, it can't be a variable, uh, I don't want them to find out today that they're saying it's thirteen point eight percent that we attribute to diesel fuel costs and next month it's twenty-seven point three percent that they attribute to. You know, I'm not saying they would, but it can't fluctuate, we, we need to know what they're attributing historically and pick a number. And that's the formula for the three years of the contract. And then they can renegotiate that in three years if they find that it's off. So, I had already asked that, she didn't respond back to that piece of it, so I'm assuming no response means she was fine with it. She pushed back on the other two and that's what she responded with. And I'd be okay with the four dollar lower threshold and as long as they can set that, um. I mean, the difference of five or seven is, it's not a lot of dollars when you're talking about an increase on, on this budget. So I wouldn't, you know, if you're, if the CPIU comes in a little bit higher at seven, where it was last year, I wouldn't. It's not enough to not sign the contract, in my mind.
Well, based, based on that, I, I would agree with you and, and, and I think we should just, uh, you said you wanna meet and you have some more questions?
Yeah, there's just a couple of small things I wanna make sure that come out in the final, uh, final contract before we sign it.
And I would say we're okay.
We're feeling good about it and. So stick with the same authorization to negotiate and finalize?
Did you, um, you said you offer, you wanted the lower of CPI or five and they said no?
Correct. They said they felt that, um.
I feel like higher of four in CPI, I would prefer if we're gonna go higher, but those are my only thought on a pushback is to say, okay, you want higher, fine. But let's, let's lower the floor a little, right, to where, where it starts. If CPI has been that high for this long that they're, they're saying, right?
Then they're gonna.
Then they're always gonna get CPI, so.
But if it drops way down, then we get to see the benefit of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's still in their favor based on that, but.
I can respond back one more time with, uh.
For me, finalize stuff the way you see fit and the same as, same authorization.
Alright, I'll put together. Before I send it to Aaron, I'll send it to you and you can just give a, a quick glance and make sure I captured everything.
And, uh, if you get to where you've got everything answered, I think we're ready to see a final proposal. If you're ready to bring one, if you guys are ready, bring it. I'm gonna pass over meeting minutes unless you guys won't do it. Okay, uh, we're gonna pass over bylaw requests, I'm looking at those next time. Anything goes program, you're not sending that out until next month?
No, I need that.
You need that, discussion regarding almost anything goes program for May twenty twenty-three, that's not really any change, correct?
No, except for because the recycling center is currently closed.
Those things are off.
So we normally have to offer it a Saturday.
So that's not gonna happen.
The only question that we had in there, because we used to offer, you could come down for a fee and deliver some of those things. Is there anything you would wanna take, i.e. mattresses and we could have a box drop that people could pay to put them in there?
Someone has to man it and all that, based on mattresses? I would say it's for a fee, there's other places they can go, it's the same idea, because the things that were free are not offered. Mattresses weren't free, the things they have to pay for, they can take elsewhere and that's where we've been. I don't think, I don't know what your thoughts are, I don't think offering it makes sense.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but I thought in the past that if you, um, the, uh, policy and procedure was it that if you took the mattress and box spring apart, that you could still, um.
I don't think that changed, right, I mean, if they strip the metal out of something and put it on the curb, it's metal, right?
We, they can't put it in the compactor truck. So that, back when we had sort of like roll-offs where things could go, that was different, the compactor truck, we have not, ever since we've been using compactor trucks, we have not been able to take springs, they don't compact.
More than likely, if they're out there a week early, they won't be by the pickup date, but that's the residence problem if they are.
Correct.
I didn't recall that that was excluded, but makes sense, I guess. Does it all roll off at all?
If they strip them down, there's enough, uh, scrap, metal scrappers, they'll pick them up. They won't, they won't sit for too long if they're, if they're out on the side of the road stripped down.
I mean, I did it one year, I, I, I broke it all down, it was a pain in the ass, let me tell you. I think the next time, I, I swore afterwards that, that I would just pay the money to ship the mattress off.
It's like the one time, you'll never do it again thing, I get it. Um, but we are not gonna come pick up your, about your springs if they don't disappear, that's not gonna happen, just, just for the record.
That's correct.
Uh, is there a motion? Do you want a motion?
It looks fine.
Okay, so this is going out in the interim.
Sounds good. We do not have much to review for first light agreements and recreation, cause we didn't get it. So we have some oldish documents we can digest further, but nothing to discuss really tonight.
Right, that's, the only thing we've received is recreation.
Last year. The only thing I gave you is their most recent filing with FERC for this status update. But I, I've been very clear with all parties that you needed this last week, if you were gonna review it for tonight, and I don't have.
We didn't get it, so pass over. So we passed over three, I think that was everything.
Let me double check, I think that sounds right.
How would we know at this hour? No, I'm sorry, I can't see it to tell, no.
Yes.
Yes, that was it?
That was it.
Okay. Um, our next meeting is the twentieth, we don't have a time yet.
No.
Okay, so we'll let you guys know and that is, um, all executive session at this time, so, so you know. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.